Will the clerk please call a roll?
Uh, Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Thank you.
Um, if you will, please, uh, rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You are good.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written.
Do I talk now? I would like to pull-
If you want to pull, pull it when we get to it. We're not there.
Consent agenda.
I would like to pull one item from the consent agenda.
Right, I understand that. When we get to the approval of the agenda, that's when you can pull it.
Okay.
Consent agenda.
Yeah.
You've just approved the full agenda.
I just approved the full agenda, not the consent agenda.
Alright.
Okay, so the consent agenda stands approved, but we may change order depending upon the city manager and what he, what time he comes. The agenda itself is approved.
Agenda, yeah.
The consent agenda is still on our agenda. But just be aware that we may change the order of some things depending upon when the city manager can, can be here. His son is in a play and he's playing, uh, Lewis and Clark's dog. So, we want to make sure he has the opportunity to see his son on stage, so, um, depending on upon how the play goes, he will be joining us, but we want to make sure he's here for a couple of items. Alright, so, next item on the agenda is citizen comments. It's an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to, uh, to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. If the clerk will please call the first person.
James McNeil?
Hello, council and mayor. My name is James McNeil. I am a citizen of Bothell. I've been in the Bothell-Curklin area for forty-nine years.
Could you state your address, please, for the record?
16314 Valhalla Drive. I'm here on behalf of thirteen-hundred people that have signed a petition on OneBothell's website, asking for your support of the purchase of the Wayne Golf Course located along the Sumamish River in Bothell as a recreational restoration habitat for fish and wildlife and an education outreach regarding the health of Puget Sound. Twenty years ago, the community purchased development rights on the front nine of the Wayne Golf Course in recognition of the importance of the open space. Now, the golf course faces two possible futures. It can become yet another housing development, or it can become the site of a restoration project that can contribute to the recovery of the endangered species. It came, um, and it can become an expansion of the Blythe Park, an adjacent trail system that includes Burt-Gioman Trail. The restoration work on the site provide excellent opportunities to educate the public on how our actions affect the species in our region and engage improving quality of life for the people, plants, and animals who live here. Historically, the river is surrounded by marsh. When Lake Washington was lowered, these marshes were dried and the river was reduced to a single channel. The result impaired salmon survival, with the Chinook salmon being placed on an endangered species list and kokanee, also known as a redfish, going from the most common fish into the lake to being concerted as an endangered species living. The decline of the Chinook salmon in abundance of the west coast is primary cause for the southern resident killer whales being listed as endangered. So, we're here today, we're asking the city of Kenmore to support Bothell and all the twenty-eight government that's part of the Wyre Eight Council and, and helping us to preserve the Wayne Golf Course as a recreational wildlife habitat corridor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Andy Rihaun?
Hello. My address is 1962119th Place Northeast in Bothell. I am a Bothell City Council member. I'm here on my own accord, though, so, I'm also the Wyre Vice Chair for the Chinook Salmon Recovery Council. I come here tonight to back up James McNeil and ask for your support of a five million dollar state legislative ask that the city of Bothell is placed in the senate and the house budget. It, I think, will help the city of Kenmore as well as the city of Bothell, having a, a, a green belt essentially through the city of Bothell. That's hundreds of acre, you know, hundred-and-fifty, hundred to two-hundred acres of natural area for recreational purposes would be huge, I think, for our, our region. I also think it's important for the recovery of Chinook salmon. There's this opportunity, especially for five million dollars, just doesn't come up very often. It came up very last minute, so we weren't able to use the appropriate lines that we typically ask for money through these budgeting processes. We were given forty-five days. So, that's why we have done just about everything we can except go down and beg for money. Well, basically, we are begging for money now at the state. So, um, we would just, we would greatly appreciate I could give you guys any information about the support of the city council for getting this five million dollars. Again, I wasn't sent here specifically, I didn't ask the council if I can come down here and talk to you guys, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know the opportunity is in front of us and it will be gone. We don't, we can't get through the normal processes to get this five million dollars. It will be sold and it will become residential housing, so, I didn't, half the time I needed to, so, have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ream.
Sarah Hayashi?
Good evening, I'm Sarah Hayashi, um, Kenmore resident at 1461581st Avenue Northeast and-
Carissa Webster at 1532575th Avenue Northeast.
So, we are here as board members of the North Shore Schools Foundation to formally invite you, the Mayor Baker and city council members, Deputy Mayor Van Ness and, um, city manager, Rob Carlinsy, and in this case, Assistant City Manager Nancy Owsley, to be our guests at the North Shore Schools Foundation All-In for Kids Luncheon on April 7th up at the Linwood Convention Center. Now, I understand that April 7th is a very busy agenda for you with the volunteer fair and the workshop with Peter Kagiayami, Kagiayama. At any rate, but reassure you that, um, that All-In for Kids Luncheon will be well worth your time and we will have you back in the office by two o'clock. We know that education is a vital factor in healthy communities, making, oh, and the North Shore Schools Foundation strives to be an integral part of that by making a meaningful impact to our students in public education, raising funds to support challenging programs, mobilizing community resources, and bridging the community with our schools. And we, as residents of Kenmore, love being a part of this community. On February 10th, the North Shore Schools Foundation granted nearly forty thousand dollars to the North Shore School District. That investment is impacting elementary, the Kenmore Elementary Schools every day by funding new teacher classroom libraries, the Math Olympiad, national training for our PE teachers, both elementary and junior high, and our elementary and Kenmore Junior High school gardens. District-wide, the foundation supports all of our teachers pursuing national board certification and supports our advanced and disadvantaged students. At Inglemore High School, the North Shore Schools Foundation has made specific investments in sports medicine courses, career and technology programs, and of course, special funding as you have to Inglemore's band and orchestra and their journey to Carnegie Hall. This year's All-In for Kids Luncheon will highlight health and human services programs offered to our students throughout the district that are made possible with foundation funding and community support. This year also, the MC will be Kenmore's very own Michelle Millman. Michelle is the morning and noon anchor for Cairo Seven and has children in the Kenmore Schools, as well as she is very personally interested in our health and human, human services, uh, programs. At any rate, the annual luncheon is the largest community event held in North Shore. Your presence is an important part of that experience for us, and I hope you will be able to attend and be our guests at the All-In for Kids Luncheon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayashi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Stoltz?
Good evening, Mayor Baker, members of the council. My name is Pete Stoltz. I work for Cal Portland. We have the sand and gravel concrete operation at 6423 Northeast 175th Street. I'm here tonight with Sean Font, our plant superintendent. Really here for two reasons tonight. I saw item seven be on your agenda, of course, and wanted to show up and express our interest in working with city staff and city council to find amicable and reasonable solutions to citizens' complaints and whatever we can find to do better. We're always striving to do that. I also wanted to use this opportunity to illuminate how our operation supports the city's endeavors. Kenmore, like much of our region, is growing quickly, and one of the things that's interesting is that aggregate demand, that's sand and gravel, concrete and rock, is about a hundred percent correlation with population growth. So, that means as more and more people come to our region, there's more and more demand for gravel. It's pretty interesting, about fourteen tons of gravel per capita is used each year. Now, kind of dividing that out, if you put, divided it out every day, if you took your daily allotment of gravel and put it in your suitcase, it'd weigh about seventy-five pounds, and when you showed up at the airport, you'd have to pay extra to check it onto the airplane. So, how does that relate to what we do here? Well, every week, three or four barge loads of gravel are delivered to our plant here in Kenmore. And each of those barges hauls about same amount of material as a hundred-and-thirty truck and trailer loads. So, every week, our operation eliminates between four and five hundred truck and trailer uh, trips off your local roadways and provides material at a, you know, reasonable and economic manner to support local infrastructure. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, and again, reiterate our willingness to help find solutions where we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz.
Patrick O'Brien?
Patrick O'Brien, 6330 Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore. Good evening, everyone. Here we are. I would like to point out that I, I would like you to investigate whenever staff goes into a report and you find that there's no hard evidence to support it and it basically relies on platitudes and what their personal opinion is. I've seen occasions of that, and I want you to be scrutinize that fully and ask harder questions and evidence for anything that a staff member puts forward. We'd also, I'd be interested in seeing where Cal Portland or any of the operation in the Kenmore Industrial Park have been given a pass on hours of operation or noise violations. I have not found it in any code. I have not seen or had produced for me in their permits an exemption from city code. Doesn't exist. So, when I call 911 at four, four-thirty in the morning and I say, "Hey, there's, there's an operation going on at four-thirty in the morning," and that's, you know, I've quoted chapter and verse of the code to our city manager, uh, and I've asked for the police chief to call me, they basically tell me at 911, "Well, we're from Lake Forest Park and we have the night shift and Chief Sether is not going to send anybody and he's not going to write anybody up." And this is for our own ordinances, multiple ordinances. So, yes, I am interested in, in the concrete folks trying to play by the rules and working something out with the neighbors because it's not, it's not the purported barge level that he said. It's seven to ten barges a week, and sometimes it's two a night. That is not so egregious, but what is egregious is that we've had no working relationship with them even though we've called and had meetings there. There's also the issue of the large barges that are not allowed to leave fully loaded because of the sediment issue. And there is no Kenmore record of when those barges are coming and going. They come in at two and three in the morning, so they make sure that nobody's there to see if they are stirring up sediment. And I think, uh, since they were written up for this, and it is a real issue, that the city of Kenmore must post when these large barges are coming in, so people like me with nothing better to do can get up at two o'clock in the morning and go down there and see exactly what they're up to. There's also, uh, expert research sitting in this room where people have read copious documents at the Department of Ecology and other places, and yet they've been given just three minutes to present that information to you. And then, we hear a staff person or a visitor give you a line of malarkey that only is fitting on St. Patrick's Day. And we think that staff or somebody should take some time with some of the people that have a demonstrated expertise in researching and have them produce the documents that we rely on when we complain. That only makes sense. I mean, if we know something that they're not telling you or they're not researching or you don't take the time to read, then how can you make an informed decision? You can't. You can't. You have, you have a underlying goal and you have a big smokescreen on what you're trying to accomplish, and the end justifies the means. And we see that over and over with this council, and I think some of you someday will break out of that mode, and I'm just asking for some individualism and some independent thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Kate Donaldson?
Hi, everybody. Kate Donaldson, address 6401 Northeast, 181st Street. So, tonight, you're going to be discussing the potential for high-capacity transit on 522 and, as well as a proposal for water taxi service. Last week, I met with Rob Carlinsy, the city manager, to discuss the building and the construction of the new improved downtown Kenmore area. I applaud all of the green features Rob mentioned. Specifically, I love the town green idea of the, um, public gathering place that will help create our own sense of place and downtown identity. I have to read this because I'm so nervous standing here. You guys have no idea. Second time I've done this. I've never done this in my life other than, okay. "I think the architecture schemes look very nice. Love the idea of the hot rocks on which to warm our backsides. In essence, this is supposed to be the gateway to Kenmore, and it sounds really lovely, and I want this to happen. The only problem is our industrial waterfront." And I'm just wondering, why would we want to sit on an elevated lawn to watch a movie if the industrial area is the real backdrop? Do we really want to gather at the town green space with the prevailing winds from the south making it difficult to breathe? Kenmore is the high-capacity, Kenmore with the high-capacity transit on 522 is really the gateway to Bothell, to Woodenville. We can dress up the downtown area in nice architectural ways, but without addressing the industrial area, C-Mex, Keywick, Gary Sargent, Cal Portland, we'll never be able to achieve, achieve our potential here in Kenmore. I just wish that we could put our heads together to figure out a way to maybe purchase the land or, I mean, I'm really going out on a limb here because I don't know if any of this could ever be possible. Something has to change. And I realize it would take major cleanup, but the truth is that I'm afraid that until we address the shoreline area, we'll always be the home of asphalt, Kenmore Air, and famous maybe for being the spot where they, um, built the, the pontoons for the 522 bridge, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donaldson.
Janet Hayes?
Janet Hayes, 6303 Northeast 181st, number 301, Kenmore, Washington. I'm, I'm here because I'm looking at the agenda for tonight, and I'm really, this is a continuation on something that Patrick was talking about. Public comment is always at the beginning of the meeting. Even though there are some issues in the meeting where you are taking votes and you're making comments, and we're not allowed, even if we have information that answers each of your questions to whoever has made a presentation, to give any kind of rebuttal. I was here two meetings ago with Richard Honor, who spoke, gave three minutes, and when Nancy Owsley and Dan Berlin talked about the navigation channel once again, he was very furious about not being able to rebut it. And he's a toxicologist and he has been studying it for years. The second thing I wanted to talk, so, back to that. Is there any chance that there could be a three minute, our three minutes at the end of a meeting or in the middle of a meeting or something? If you could help figure that out, it would be great. And I was looking ahead at Brian's presentation. I know that no decision's going to be made tonight, but, um, I want to make sure when he does give his presentation, I notice in each section that he has checked that the staff recommends to pursue the one code enforcement. That's access Kenmore's nuisance code is checked, but there is no, and, and there's several categories in that. It's not checked whether it's yes or no you are going to, um, pursue it. There's no answer in that line. And those things that it would pursue would be business hours of operation for heavy industry, noise, lighting, odor, higher fines for violations. The only thing it says a yes to is lighting, which bothers me because the tugs come in every night. They shine right in our window. The other, um, issue that I wanted to quickly mention is Rob is going to make a presentation that, of Kenmore's requested priorities for King County, one of them being the Kenmore navigation dredging. And since the kid, city is saying that King County is the local sponsor and we are telling them that, that they are, I, I would like to know if we've found out anymore when they plan to test the birthing area that they are responsible for dredging also, to the same level as the navigation channel. If you want the documentation, I'll be glad to provide it again. I have, um, in-depth pages, but I did give you the one that did have it. Because as long as that lake is filled with the dioxins that it is, and they've been spread all over for, um, four years now, three and a half years now, um, there's no point in making Wayne Golf Course along the Sumamish Slough anything. There's no point worrying about the boats going in and out and fishing because they'll never be able to eat the fish they catch. So, there's a real, real problem, and I want you to know when you're thinking about all these things that you, okay, that this just isn't your lake. It's our lake, this city's, this state's. It's not your shoreline, it's our shoreline, and it's our health and our safe way, uh, safety, not yours. Our safe way too, actually. But, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayes.
There's no one else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to, uh, to be heard? Thank you for your comments. A lot of this stuff is on for the agenda tonight, and, uh, we do appreciate your comments. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I would like to have one item pulled for discussion, and that is B.
Item B. Item B will be pulled. So, the consent agenda remains with item A, items A and C. Is there a motion to approve those two?
So moved.
And a second? Oh, second. Moved and seconded. It's items A and C only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items A and C pass. Item B, Councilmember Curtis.
So, this, um, issue of a lot that we purchased as a city, uh, it was before my time on the council, and I, I just don't have enough information to really understand what it is, what we purchased, what we hope to accomplish with it, if we are accomplishing that. It looks like it, the, um, initial action was 2004, so I think it's just lack of information on my part. So, I was wondering if staff could give me a little more information. And I guess the real question is, was it a purchase that we would do again today? Is it something that we want to be responsible for forever? Is it something that we're required to be responsible for? I just need more, uh, more, more information.
Mr. Mayor, uh, as you can see, Brian Hampson and Zach Richardson are going to address some questions.
Have a seat.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, to answer your question, the, the lot was purchased as part of a settlement agreement. There was a dispute over how the critical areas in that, that particular plat had been distinguished, um, and as part of the settlement agreement, there was an opportunity to purchase one of the lots and save it. It's right next to one of the native growth protection areas, and so it essentially spans that area without, without actually having adjusted the property line. It was purchased back then with conservative futures money, so we did get a grant for it. And as part of that, that grant opportunity, we did actually agree with King County that this would remain open space. This is really just that final step of formalizing it on title.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was involved in that, in that decision, so I wasn't, not aware of the futures money involved or the agreements that were done in King County. But I think there was some concern also over the homeowners association, thus being a member of that.
Yeah, at this time, the homeowners for that particular plat is starting to form, and since we're a home, a lot owner in that lot, this should, um, we've worked with their legal team to get us out of their membership, so we are not responsible for dues and for voting rights and such.
So, we are not responsible?
Correct. Well, with the recording of the open space grant.
Alright, are you satisfied? So, you want to move to put it back?
I would make a motion to put it back and approve it.
Okay. So, we have a motion and I'll second to, um, approve item number B, contract number fifteen dash C, uh, 1381. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, business agenda, approval of the high deductible health saving, uh, health plan savings account. Mrs. Gregory?
Good evening, Mayor Baker, city council members. So, as, as far back as 2013, the city has been examining strategies for health coverage for employees that would contain city-paid costs but still ensure that the city and the employees were getting the best value for their dollar. The team that was created, composed of both staff and councilmembers Smith and Curtis, last provided information to you in November of 2013, and that, which is contained in the memo in your packet. Since then, one change that we did make was to, um, change our provider for our life insurance, long-term disability, and accidental death and dismemberment, which saved the city several thousand dollars a year in premiums. The conclusion, though, in November of 2013 was to move forward with, um, offering a high deductible health plan to the employees in addition to the current regions and health plan, group health plans that are now in- plan, group health plans that are now enjoyed. The high deductible health plan premiums, at least this year, are 46% less than what is currently paid for regents. So there's quite a potential for savings, some for the employee, but especially for the employer, when an employee transitions to the new plan. As an example, a single employee's premium savings between a regent's plan and the high deductible plan is $3,800 a year. And when a high deductible health plan is offered, it has much higher annual deductibles for the employee and potential out-of-pocket costs. So the incentive for an individual to take that option is that a health savings account can be created with funds provided from both the city and the employee. So the decision that the committee needed to make at that point, then, was what is the appropriate level of funding that the city would provide to employees who opted for the high deductible health plan, but still enjoy some of the savings that would be realized when an employee did transition? At this point, I wanted to reiterate that a high deductible health plan would still be an option for the employees, not a requirement. It would be offered in addition to the plans we have now, and anyone can stay on the plan that we have now, or during open enrollment, go back and forth. But we all know that change is coming, and in 2018, the plans that we enjoy now will no longer be available, and less benefit-rich plans and alternatives will need to be explored. So by opening up this option to our employees now, they may have time to study and understand benefits that they might enjoy under this new high deductible health plan. Anyway, there's a prescribed maximum annual contribution to the health savings account, and it can be shared in any proportion between the employer and the employee. Currently, that cap is $3,350 for a single individual and $6,650 for families. So the benefit review team wished, in the early implementation period, to incentivize employees to make an early switch. Therefore, if we began the plan in mid-2015, the city would provide a very meaningful dollar contribution for '15 and the first full year, 2016, which might encourage employees to make the change. After 2016, the incentive would be reduced according to the contributions that are projected and presented in the Agenda Bill, and which end up being more in line with what we see other cities who are offering high deductible health plans, funding their health savings accounts. The advantage to the employee of the health savings account is that, once deposited, it's their money, following them wherever they choose to work or retire, with tax-free benefits if spent in accordance with the provisions of the plan, on qualified medical expenses, which can include deductibles, over-the-counter medications, dental vision, et cetera. And the advantage to the city is in the premium savings offset by the annual health savings account contributions, which grow with the number of employees making the change. So the action sought tonight is for the City Council to approve the high deductible health plan as an option beginning July 1st, that the employees can choose, and to fund the associated health savings accounts according to the schedule outlined on the Agenda Bill. Are there any questions?
Looks like we don't have any questions. So, if there are no questions, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt or approve the high deductible health plan savings account.
Oh, so moved.
Moved and?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Smith.
Well, I'd like to thank Joanne Gregory for her work on this. I know there's a lot of information we requested, and a lot of, a lot of ways to interpret a lot of different things, but the, the goal, I think it's fair to say, was we were able to achieve a win-win in that every, every employee that chooses this has the potential for a financial benefit, and every employee that chooses this also will benefit the city financially. And it's, it was an opportunity that, it's a matter of working the numbers a bit, but I think this set up a situation that was, that allows them to kind of mitigate some of the upfront risk, and we can save some money. So let's hope they have a little ownership in their plan, and it can be a win-win.
Councilmember Herbig.
Again, good work, and I appreciate the work that you and Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Curtis put into this. This isn't really a plan that I would ever choose for me and my family, and if we were looking to move exclusively to this, I'd be fighting tooth and nail against that sort of change. But because we're leaving the options open for folks, you know, I think this is, this is a nice option to have in addition to everything else, and I'll be supporting this.
Anything else? Councilmember Curtis.
I think, you know, as we were looking at it, we looked at all kinds of options, and the world will change in the next two to three years. So to give us the most options to prepare for that was one of our goals. To keep it optional instead of forcing it on people was really important to us. To cover that extra deductible, and to help, so for cities or any business, just to keep their healthcare costs the same is pretty amazing, because generally it goes up, and this helps us accomplish that. If a person, so as a physician, if I have a person who comes in with a high deductible plan like this, they care about how much the medicine's cost and how much the MRIs cost, and if I suggest that they don't really need an MRI for their knee pain, that maybe a little ibuprofen and PT will work, and most of the time I'm right, that we save everybody a whole bunch of money. And so people are very invested, and when they need things, they will still do it. And this kind of covers that, really high, high-cost things. But people care, take, you know, some real interest in keeping costs down, and it does make a difference. And you can still give good care with these kind of plans. It does not limit people from getting excellent care.
Councilmember Smith.
Actually, Councilmember Curtis just said exactly what I wanted to say, that it, there's a, there's a, the world is changing, and this is just a step in that direction.
All right, any further questions, comments? Hearing man clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Let's go ahead and move B to C and take C and put that in B. Give the city manager a chance to get here.
Mayor, could I, could I just thank the councilmembers again?
Certainly.
Councilmember Smith and Curtis, they provide a lot of insight, conversation, debate, analysis, and really became involved in the conversation and the outcome, so I appreciate that very much.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make a brief comment, I'd like to thank the team that worked on this project, and particularly Joanne, and in characteristically valiant form, she is here tonight, and she's not going to be with us for a few weeks, and so I thank Joanne in particular for her work on this project.
All right, so, Ms. Owsley, can you talk to us about the King County legislative agenda, please?
Get some sleep, and I hope you have a really good recovery.
Thank you, Patty. Take care, I'll let you know as soon as I can. I'm great, and hear yourself.
Good job.
Mayor and council, good evening. We're here tonight to review a discussion that began at your January retreat, and we, not exactly looking for final approval tonight or anything like that, but just to continue the conversation, see if there are any questions or any additions that you would desire putting on this priority list for King County. It's really not the same kind of legislative agenda that we do at the state or federal level, but I think we've all heard from, particularly our state delegation, that it is helpful for them to know what our priorities are going into a session, and I think having some sense of our priorities in our policy work with King County will, will be helpful to us as well. So with that, happy to answer any of your questions or comments, things that you would like to see added or modified.
Councilmember Danuski.
Thank you. Let's see, I have a few different comments or questions. We talk a lot about water health and invasive weeds. Do we want to talk about toxic algae, which seems to be kind of new to our area, and put that on there? Because that's something, is that something that this agenda would be able to cover?
It is. You know, we, you could certainly add that as a comment, because King County Public Health is, is involved in that, and it's, just like everything else that comes down the river, it's a regional issue.
And so I guess I'm curious to know if anybody else wants to see that on there, and also the invasive aquatic weeds is in the Samamish River section, but that probably applies to the north end of the lake as well, so maybe we don't need to just say Samamish River on that.
Okay.
So I'll start with those two and let everybody else comment.
Yeah, I'm certainly in agreement with those two. Also, I was up at, in Redmond, Saturday, at the Willamore Project, in what they're doing with the outfall of Lake Samamish. And I know they have a number of stakeholders involved, and I was a little surprised, since we're the downstream community, and we seem to be the one that's ending up with a lot of stuff coming from there that we weren't part of the stakeholder, so maybe we would like to look into that a little bit more. And if nothing else, become a little more vocal on that issue. Because I know that they're trying to look at restoring the salmon habitat, and I think one of the big issues that they're finding up there, and one of their plans is to tag the juvenile fish, because they don't know where they're getting fish lost from. They don't know whether they're losing the fish coming down the river, going out the locks, in the ocean, coming back in the locks, or coming back up the river. So I think that we ought to at least have a, a little bit of interest in what, what they're planning on doing there, so.
All right.
Anything else? Anybody else? Councilmember Herbig.
For the last couple months, we've been talking a lot about this navigation channel, and I have to say I'm a little uncomfortable having it on the King County agenda, seeing as we still haven't figured out where the dioxins are coming from. I would be much more comfortable moving forward with the dredging, and moving forward, pushing for the dredging, once we have a better understanding from ecology as of exactly what the sources for the dioxin issues that we have in the harbor, in the marinas. I'd rather get that nailed down first than, than keep pushing forward on the dredging issue, and I was wondering if any of my colleagues have the same concern or from all alone on this one.
Do you have any idea where the request for the 300 and some thousand is for ecology to do the work? Because I've heard they don't want it. They're not asking for it now.
Yeah, that's my last, that's what I last heard also.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's enough reason to keep going forward with this, because if we dig out this area and we don't know where the dioxins were coming from, I just don't, I just think we're kind of jumping a step in this entire cleanup if we are digging a big trench before we know where the problems are. And I'd really rather have that first part figured out before we do the second part, and I think it sends mixed messages when we're asking for ecology to help locate the problem while at the same time pursuing, you know, federal and county help with, with navigation channel.
And I certainly see the litany in that, that we really should find out where the source is, so.
I mean, I'd rather just have this taken off for maybe this year until we get some better idea of what ecology's calendar is on this, because I know they're dragging their feet a little bit, and I'm not sure exactly where things are. I don't know, I just, I just feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, before the horse on this one.
Could we try and fashion some language that, that recognizes that importance of, of investigating the source? I think as, as we mentioned when we were here several weeks ago, we expect that any of these discussions will take some time, and, and King County is a, you know, very necessary partner in this, and so if you'd indulge us in trying to make some revisions to the language to make sure that the ecology work is included in the statement.
Yeah, I'm open to that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
And I know that I have been working with Representative Palet to try to get ecology to, to get, get it on their work plan and get them to find some stuff, and so.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Curtis.
So the way I was looking at it is this is going to be a multi-year project, and so King County has to be on board, and then, once something's actually decided with funding, then the small marinas that want to tag on to us, they're the ones who really seriously need to have some testing, more testing done before anything can be done.
Right.
So that's more work that will be done to help locate some of the, the source of problems. And then the birthing channel isn't actually part of the navigation channel.
Right.
So that has to be done as well. So I sort of see it as, it's very specific, just the channel, and all the pieces around it would all be done together, and by the time everybody does their testing, it's going to just take years. So I figured, get it on the list and sort of start the process.
And I think that you, you were back there in DC, that we found out some new information that we'd never found out before, in that the sole financial responsibility for the navigation channel alone is the feds, that the local sponsor, King County, doesn't have to pick up any extra funds, and certainly the city's not on the hook for the extra funds. So as far as the navigation channel only is concerned, that, that's a federal responsibility because they've taken it on as a federal navigation channel. And then as far as the rest of the area in there, the property owners have to take that on, and that, yeah, being the marinas, the cement plant, that whole area, so.
Correct.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Ms. Owsley, now that the sediment characterization report has been done, I, my understanding is there's a shelf life, for lack of a better term, when it expires. Can you tell me where we are at in that?
We confirmed in our most recent meeting at the Seattle District, it's three years.
Three years, and it was done last year?
It was just done, the samples were taken in the summer of 2014.
So about half a year, okay. So we have about two and a half years before we'd have to start over. Okay.
But we also got some confirmation on that, and the only, the necessity for the sampling was because of open water disposal. Since that's been confirmed that it is upland disposal, the shelf life is not that material because it has to be disposed of in a much safer manner, so that's not the issue anymore, so the three years is.
Well, that's actually good news that, because three years is short in this kind of a project, so.
Yeah, we can attest to that.
They wanted to make sure that it was, it was clean, and if it was clean, then they would have wanted it tested to make sure that it hadn't changed, but since we already know it's contaminated.
Thanks for making that point.
It's not going to get less contaminated in that period.
Contamination, you know, could get worse, but the disposal of it is not going to get worse or more expensive. It's still upland disposal.
Right, correct.
Councilmember Curtis.
It might be a subtlety, but they did make the point repeatedly that they did not use the word contamination. They said the study was designed to determine if it was adequate for putative sound disposal, and it was not.
Right.
So they distinguished those two things.
Right. They definitely did. Anything, Councilmember Sperry?
So, when we get down to the Samamish River, it seems like a lot of this is addressed in the WIRA 8, which we're going to talk about later. So is that sort of part of this process, working with King County through the existing agencies and organizations?
Yes, and, and I think, I think that that's a good addition to, to put in for context.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
On a different section, for the metro transit, we have the addition of bus routes in Kenmore. We don't mention anything about more capacity for the 522 route. I don't know if that's something we want to add, or if that's something that's a big enough problem to add it on here. I know they're getting full early.
No, that does make sense, to see if we can get more capacity.
But does King County have anything to do with sound transit?
Yeah, no.
They don't? Okay.
They do with the metro side.
Because it says metro, so, yeah.
That's true.
It says metro, yeah.
But 522 is a-
But 522 is a sound transit route?
And metro. It's metro in the, it's metro in the peak hours.
There are no sound transit buses? There are sound transit buses?
522 is a sound transit route. 306, or the 312 is not. That's a metro route, and that runs during the.
Okay, she said 520.
I did, but I guess just in general, getting to downtown early in the morning, maybe some words to add some capacity there.
Presumably, though, you would want King County representative's support for the sound transit.
Sure. Because they still run the sound transit in addition. So, yeah. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
All right. We will be back. Okay.
Next item on the agenda is industrial uses. Mr. Hampson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The purpose of this discussion is to provide counsel with information in order to consider an ordinance for providing regulations of negative externalities caused by heavy industry and heavy manufacturing activities within Kenmore. With me tonight, I have Greg Lum, our building and code inspector. If you remember during the council retreat, council directed the city manager to prepare a list of options that could discuss negative externalities caused by heavy industry. And so that's the reason for preparing this council bill and this, having this discussion. First off, I'd like to thank you for the questions that we received in advance, and we could go over those tonight, too. And also, we did reach out to the local businesses that could be affected by this regulation or any kind of new regulations that were set, that could be set in place, and let them know that we were having this discussion. And unfortunately, WashDOT was prepared to give a presentation on the 520 floating bridge project, but because of their recent tragedy, they couldn't make it tonight. But with that, we can go ahead and get started. And so what we did as a staff group, we sat down and came up with a list of options and really kept the windows and the doors open and tried to come up with a list that could cover a wide range. So some of these, you could see that may not be feasible or make sense at any time. So just take that in consideration, that we're not recommending necessarily all of these. And as you could notice, there's some areas that we are recommending to pursue further. But we could discuss that more tonight and get, give you some more examples on why we are recommending that. So what we did is we basically came up with about five different sections. And those included stuff that had to deal with the public roads, or fees and licenses, code enforcement issues, and development regulations and some other options. And so what I'll do is I'll just start with the public road section and explain some information. And if you have any questions at any time, just feel free to jump in and ask me a question. So starting with the roads, one of our options were to revise our Kenmore municipal code to establish truckload limits on the city's right of way. Currently, the only roads that have truckloads limited are 68th Avenue southbound, over the West Samamish Bridge, and also winter and emergency load restrictions. And that occurs throughout Kenmore during winter and emergency situations that the police can enforce load capacities. Also, the Washington State has load restrictions on what trucks can and can't haul. Another option was to revise our Kenmore municipal code to limit the truck haul routes within Kenmore. Again, currently, the only route that is regulated is the southbound traffic on 68th Avenue across the West Samamish Bridge. The, another option would be to revise the Kenmore municipal code to require all trucks to cover their loads. Currently, the state law requires all loads to be covered if they have a freeboard of less than six inches. So the freeboard is the distance between the top of the rail of the truck. When the gravel or the load is piled up, the freeboard's the distance from the top to the actual load. So they can't, you know, pile it up to where there's less than six inches of gravel or, in this case, muddy asphalt. So if it gets less than that, they have to cover it. In our police department, they do enforce that right now. But right now, that's the only requirement that we have in the city of Kenmore for trucks to cover their loads.
So you've got five different sections here, right?
Right.
Would it be helpful if we dealt with each section?
Yeah.
Because you've now talked public roads. Is it helpful if we have discussion questions, whatever, on public roads, if we deal with those?
That'd be very helpful.
And that way, we can just move to the next session and then move on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. I was actually really surprised that we didn't have a requirement to cover the loads, because there's been so much publicity about, you know, with pickup loads and people, you know, getting hit by things falling off of stuff. So are there any, any examples of, are some of the, for example, I know the asphalt trucks that a lot of the smell comes when they're dumping into the load, and then when it's a fresh load? Are there, is there any, like, are you aware of any of the businesses themselves that are requiring covering? Is that a practice, or do most of those loads just go through uncovered?
I'm personally not aware of any of the businesses that require their truck drivers or operators to cover any loads.
Okay. No. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor.
I'm confused. If the state requires them to cover the loads, how can they not cover the loads in Kenmore?
Only the state law requires that if the freeboard is less than six inches, they have to cover their load.
Okay. So state law doesn't require all loads to be covered, just those that are overfilled?
Less than six inches, right.
Councilmember Herbig.
So under public roads, you recommend looking at requiring loads to be covered. But you don't have a recommendation for establishing load limits on right of way or routes on right of way for these trucks. Can you tell me a little bit about why you didn't make those recommendations?
Trying to, when we sat down as a group and decided which ones of these to recommend, I'm trying to remember or recall why we didn't recommend establishing truckloads or haul routes. And I can't remember off the top of my head.
I guess, King County, I think, because there was a couple of traffic accidents, and one on 405 in particular comes to mind, has required loads to be covered. And I certainly would be in favor of having loads covered. I've been behind trucks that have gravel or remnants of gravel or whatever, and not covered, and stuff's flying out and breaks the windshield and whatever. So, I mean, just to be consistent with the code in King County, I would prefer to see loads covered. Can. Deputy Mayor.
Can we require that loads be covered, to totally, all loads be covered, regardless of how full the truck is?
So our plan after tonight is to take your recommendations and your thoughts and considerations and discuss that and see what our options are. We'll probably have to get our legal team involved and see what we can do.
Councilmember Danuski, then I want to ask the city attorney a question.
Are there other cities that go above and beyond and have required to cover all their loads? Or would we be the first, or we looked into that?
We did take a look into it. And we didn't find any specific cities that required it, but there are other jurisdictions, counties that require it.
Our city attorney, are we within the city's rights? I mean, we can make rules stronger unless the state has specifically taken that ability away, correct?
On covering loads, I'm not sure. I would want to take a look at this, though. Because the argument against requiring all trucks in Kenmore to cover their loads is that as they move from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, if every other jurisdiction, let's say, has load cover requirements that are different from state law, then trucks are going to have to change their covers in the different jurisdictions. Or they're going to have to cover all their loads, and I'm sure there'd be a lot of pushback from the industry. So we need to take a look at this.
Okay. And I'm thinking specifically loads that start in Kenmore. Not loads that are passing through, but loads that originate here.
And that's one of the issues we need to think about. Yes.
Anybody else? Councilmember Sperry.
I definitely think this is worth taking a look at. You know, just again, like I said earlier, that the asphalt and the smell, I don't know if you have anything to add there, Ms. Strom. It seems like that's an easy way to maybe mitigate some of that. So. But I do understand that it gets complicated pretty fast. So.
So if you could take a look at that one. Are we okay on public roads? Any other questions? All right. Next item, fees and licenses.
The next option would be to establish a business and occupational tax on heavy industries within Kenmore. And currently, we don't have any business and occupational taxes, as you know. But there was a question regarding this. And the response we got from MRSC was that the city can enact a business and occupation tax on a specific classification, but within the class rate must be the same. So the BNO tax authority for a city code is regulated under RCW 35A82 dot 020. And the general business and occupational taxes are levied at a percentage rate on the gross receipts of the business. Businesses are put in different classes, such as manufacturing, wholesale, retail, and services. And within each class, the rates must be the same, but it may differ among classes. The maximum rate that can be imposed is 0.2 percent, unless presented to the voters.
Councilmember Smith.
Thanks, Brian, and thanks for that information. And the reason I asked that was because that's something I'd like to see us pursue. And I think generally, I'm not a fan of BNO taxes. I think it's a poor way to tax. But in this situation, I do think it's different. There is considerable wear and tear on our roads and the resources that we use as for our staff to maintain the roads. And I look at this as something that I would like to see us look further into. And I see you say there's a 0.2 percent rate as a maximum, unless voter approval. I don't know that we need to know exactly what the rate is yet, but I would like to see us pursue more information on the BNO tax. And I do have one question about the specific industry. In your response to the question, you said they can enact it on a specific classification. Is heavy industry in and of itself considered a specific classification?
I'd have to look into that and see if heavy industry was its own classification. Rod may know the answer.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Hampson did point out the criteria, the standards that govern BNO taxes. And he was pointing out, we have to come up with classifications that are logical, that distinguish between the different classes, because they obviously apparently would have different rates. I guess the answer to the question is it's unknown. We'd have to figure out first, what do we mean by heavy industry or heavy manufacturing? And see, for example, if that applies logically throughout the city. But we have to take a look at these classes. And I do want to point out that, I'm sure the council is aware, that the way BNO taxes work is normally there are taxes on gross receipts. So that's something that we have to take into account also, is what is the effect of a tax on gross receipts? Versus taxes on, let's say, loads or trips?
And then we could also, I mean, as long, if you're looking at that one, you can look at the, at the business license itself, as much as I'm not a fan of that. That's something else you could take a look at, right, at that same time?
Right. That's another way of, but that's really a regulatory license fee.
Okay.
Because we would, we would be saying that certain businesses cause us to have to incur more staff time or dollars in order to regulate that particular business.
So is this an either/or?
No, you can, you can look at both.
You can look at both. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification, because that's, I look at these as working in tandem. And on the business licensing side, it makes sense for the exact same reasons. And so if we could have clarification, just so we know where, how we can do both of this in a manner that impacts the heavy industry, then I think that would be something that would be worth having a deeper discussion on.
All right. Let's go. Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Danuski, and then Councilmember.
Forget me?
Oh, I guess I did. Then.
I didn't have it. I think it was him.
So go ahead, Councilmember Curtis.
Mine was a related question. So somehow it seems like, what's the question, what's the definition of heavy industry? It somehow seems like hauling asphalt and hauling cement, concrete are similar. But my question is, would hauling lumber be similar enough, or would it be different? Or do we get to define what we mean by heavy industry?
We get to define it, but we have to make sure that the definition distinguishes it sufficiently from another class. So that's something we would have to work on. The example you raised is a very good example of why you have to be very careful in coming up with these classes.
And so may I just add, that's the reason for question number one that I had, because I wanted to know what it entails. And the answer was, there's two properties. There's two businesses, and they're clearly heavy industry. And so that's, at least, I assume you had a reason you arrived at those for answers?
Yeah, it's good to point that out. There are two properties within Kenmore, but there are three businesses. Two of them, two businesses are located on the same property. And that prop, one of the properties is at 6423 Northeast 75th Street. And the tenant of that is Cal Portland. And their products and services are aggregate and a ready-mix concrete, whereas their subtenant is Semex, and they produce the asphalt hot mix. And then the other property is the property located at 6525 Northeast 175th Street, which is known as Lake Point. And the tenant is Hewitt General Manson. It's a joint venture, and they're constructing the SR 520 floating bridge components.
Would you consider the plywood plant as heavy industry?
No.
Okay.
They call, they are classified as wholesalers.
Deputy Mayor.
Those are the three current businesses that might be considered. But there are other businesses that have been there in the past and others that might be there in the future. So whatever classification we have, it needs to be defined not by bridge building or mixing cement, but, you know, maybe waterfront activities, for example, was on Lake Point before they started building the bridge there.
Right.
So it is, it would be really critical how you define all this, not just for today's needs, but future needs. The other point I wanted to make is that these industries do provide employment in the city. Whether they're employees or Kenmore residents or not, I have no idea. But the bulk of the taxation that these businesses pay goes to state BNO tax. It goes to sales tax, but the sales tax is collected by the jurisdictions at which their product is delivered. So unless the product is delivered to Kenmore address, we get no tax revenue from these businesses. But they do impact our infrastructure and roads and. But they, they do impact our infrastructure and roads, and, and not only that, but in our, our air and our water. Other impacts there that we may not be in the position of regulating, but at least we are in the position of hearing about it from citizens, and it takes a tremendous amount of our staff time and resources in dealing with these businesses, and for no revenue, that's essentially no revenue that's coming from the businesses, other than maybe a portion of the property tax that they paid to the state. So another reason to have some other source of revenue from them.
Right. If I could comment on your comments regarding the businesses, previous businesses and the future businesses. So these businesses are grandfathered in, they're considered a non-conforming, or, excuse me, non-conforming use, and I'll talk a bit more about that later, what that means, but unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, our current zoning doesn't allow this industrial use to occur, so if there was a new business that would come and want to establish, they wouldn't be allowed to based on our current zoning regulations.
But any changes in our tax structure wouldn't affect the businesses that are there now because they're grandfathered in, you're saying?
No, I was just talking about the use, the, the use that occurs at the site.
Okay, the use, use isn't a future use.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Danuski?
I had mine answered.
Councilmember Harvey?
You know, everyone in Kenmore citizens, businesses, and businesses alike needs to contribute positively to the city, and right now, these businesses contribute heavy trucks and dirty air. And building off what Deputy Mayor Van Ness was saying, right now, I highly suspect these businesses aren't really paying their fair share. The BNO tax is probably a good way for us to make sure that they're paying kind of their portion of their usage of our roads and our waters and our air, and I think this is worth pursuing.
All right, anything else on fees and licenses? Okay, next one, code enforcement.
So code enforcement, you see the little checkbox where it says staff recommendations, and that's really to capture that whole group, and what we're recommending us doing was taking a look at our Kenmore municipal code in comparison with other cities and other jurisdictions, and, and how we could change that to get it to work with what we need it to do. And some of those were the business hours of heavy industry, the noise, lighting, odor, and then possible higher fines for those. So for, for, let's say, yeah, these three properties, the three complaints that we receive is basically lighting, noise, and odor. And so, you know, our current code talks about lighting, you know, in general, and it can't basically leave the site, but it doesn't get specific about industry or a commercial property such as this. Similarly, our codes don't discuss business hours of operation, and what I mean by that is business, business time periods that they can be open for business. There's two separate things to kind of think about when you're talking about hours of operation. One is, when can somebody effectively have a business that's open? And two, when can somebody make a noise related to an industrial business? So when we talk about the hours of operation, we currently don't have any code restrictions on a business hours of operation. Where the noise, our current regulations discuss a lot of things, but none specifically to a business-related activity. For example, KGM, Hewitt General Manson, is creating bridge components. They're not necessarily doing construction of a building or the, the land itself. Our regulations are specific to construction activities, specific, you know, we're talking about construction. There's other stuff regarding horns and sirens and, and music and whatnot, but we currently don't have anything that talks about business-related activities and noises coming from that. And so when people ask, why aren't we enforcing our rules, is we don't have that mechanism to use.
Brian, can I ask you a question on that? So if, I'm just curious, could the conditions for obtaining and maintaining a business license, could that be tied into something like that, or does that get into deeper code issues?
No, I think it, thanks for pointing that out. I think a business license is a great vehicle to regulate rules and codes effectively. If you have a rule that's in place that you have to have a business license in order for the business to operate within your jurisdiction, and it's revocable if they, you know, don't file, follow certain parameters, a very good tool is to be able to revoke it if they have multiple violations.
Thank you.
Mayor Baker, I can clarify on that.
Yes, please.
If you are desiring to regulate noise levels or the hours of operation in which the operation should not cause noise, that is more appropriate to put in a noise ordinance or in a zoning, zoning regulation, you wouldn't put it in the business regulation chapter.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got more, right?
A little bit more on odor. Currently, we have entered into a temporary arrangement with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency to help them report odor complaints. And I got some, so currently, our code doesn't discuss odor regulations, and believe it or not, some other cities do have regulations in their own municipal codes that regulate odors that come from businesses or, or properties. But just as a status update, since starting our cooperative agreement with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency in, in December of 2014, we've had a total of 16 calls. So Greg receives a call, and he's actually reported 15 reports to Puget Sound Clean Air Agency of those 16 calls. And it takes him about two to two and a half hours per call.
Wow.
So he spent roughly 21 and a half to 22 hours on these 15 call, or these 15 reports or 16 calls. And of those 15 reports that he's turned over to Puget Sound Clear, Clean Air Agency, three have resulted in some form of action, maybe a citation on a business. And I think it's important to point out, before we started this in this year, or last year, how many hundreds of complaints Puget Sound Clean Air Agency received, and not one of those resulted in any action or a citation?
So we have
Thank you.
the option then of limiting or, or fining or controlling, to a certain extent, the odors?
Again, you know, after this meeting and discussion with you, if that's one of the options that you want to pursue, we need to sit down with our legal counsel and find out what we can and can't do.
Okay.
Mayor Baker, I do have a comment on that.
Yep.
I can wait until the council members have spoken.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey? Oh, you don't have anything? Councilmember Curtis?
Well, since the businesses can be grandfathered in, can their odors be grandfathered in with them?
That would be a good question, and something we would have to look into.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I don't know that, I know that I wouldn't be in favor of, and I'm not sure sure, we can limit hours of operation. We can limit the noise and the light to certain hours in a 24-hour period, but you can't tell somebody they can't be, nobody can be working in that business, say, at 2:00 in the morning, if they're not impacting, negatively impacting the community. I don't know how you could get away with controlling, controlling that, but the noise that they produce and the light that they produce, that could be regulated, I would think.
Can I ask a question from the attorney on that, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I've got others in line, but if this is pertaining to...
It's about that specifically. So with that, does that mean then if you had an industrial plant in the middle of a residential neighborhood that was a legal non-conforming use, that you could not regulate the hours that that plant operates?
Oh, you could regulate the hours.
So then how does, how is that different if you take that now to this situation?
You can regulate the hours, but I would caution that if you're going to limit the number of operation hours, that limitation should be reasonable, so that, for example, we would pick certain hours of the night in which a certain business cannot operate. And hopefully, that business would accept the fact that those hours we have selected are reasonable, such as, for example, 11 to 6:00 in the morning. But I would recommend that if we were to do that for any business in this city, we would have some analysis and study as to what the noises are that are occurring from that business, and be able to articulate why those noises are interrupting the peace and repose of the community that is next door or in the vicinity.
Now, you're talking noise, not hours of operation.
Well, the hours of operation...
And what's the negative impact if it doesn't impact the city and the surrounding community?
I'm assuming, right, I'm assuming that if we're going to regulate the hours of operation, it's because of noise. But if there's another reason, we should talk about it.
What? You could have a, a, a heavy industry business that only makes noise when it's unloading a barge or whatever. They could, you could have a secretary working in an office, and they're still open for business, but they aren't making any noise or having any negative impact on the community. How can you, how can you get away with prohibiting any kind of business? You can prohibit noise, you can prohibit lighting at, at those hours, but to sell somebody they can't go in at night and work on a, a research paper or something?
Well, that's what I'm pointing out.
Good, yeah.
That, that it would be subject to probably a successful challenge if we couldn't articulate the adverse impacts of the operation of that business during particular hours. Usually, that impact is noise. It could be vehicle trips too, though, and, but vehicle trips normally create noise. So that's how we would justify it, that's all I'm pointing out.
Okay.
I, Ms. Mayor, I, I did have a comment about the odor issue. I wanted to caution all of us that, I noticed that all the other cities rely on PSCAA to enforce odor regulations, and I'm guessing that one of the reasons is that we and most other cities don't have the expertise to determine whether an odor that we smell is in violation of a code or regulation, which is why normally you have to rely upon experts who understand odors created by substances to do the charging. We can certainly be the eyes and ears for another agency, which we are right now, but I would caution against having us get into the business of determining that odors have violated the law, because, yeah, in my experience, you need expertise to determine what those odors are.
So then can, can we go to the one down below, higher fines? I mean, if they're violated and fined, can we addition levy a fine?
The fine would go with the violation, and if we have
Right.
difficulty determining a violation, then the fine issue goes away.
We wouldn't be determining the violation, right? Then the agency would be, the Clean Air Agency would be determining the violation.
We, we could request the air agency to increase their fines and violation penalties, yes. We could do that.
Councilmember Danuski?
So for noise, lighting, odor, we only have control of any of this on land, right? We, do we have any control of any noise or lighting or anything on the lake, like the barges?
Great question. As a general proposition, it's my understanding that our jurisdiction for criminal or civil code enforcement goes to the middle of Lake Washington. How that is actually determined around, around the bend is something we need to take a look at.
Okay.
Great question. Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually surprised that our nuisance code at this point doesn't address this particular use, because I know that with construction, you know, we have rules on that. I know that with our 522 projects, we have rules on that. So I would definitely support looking at our nuisance code and seeing what the possibilities are. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I was also surprised when I found out that our noise regulations didn't apply to, to this sort of, this sort of activity, and I, I think this is just a, something that was missed when we were probably putting together the, when the code was originally put together, and I hope this is something we can get, we can get fixed soon.
And then I see also that we're encouraging the Department of Natural Resources to inform us, to enforce limiting anch, anchorage of barges in the lake, right?
Right.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, did you have something?
I have one other little thing. When it comes to noise and odors and lighting, it, I, I'm just wondering how we can be objective about this, because it's, it's like a lot of things, it's in the eye of the beholder. And so what's offensive to some people is not offensive to others. An example would be noise. I had in, in campaigning last year, I had several people up in the Arrowhead area complaining about all the noise of the boats and the jet skis and all that that are roaring around the lake during the summer afternoons, and they want a nice quiet afternoon on their deck, and they've got to listen to all this noise going. Can't the city regulate that? Well, you know, it's offensive to some people, but to most people, it's no big deal, it's just the people having fun in Kenmore. But that, to me, is an example of how you really have to be specific as to what is prohibited at what times, and what is too much, and what is not too much, and it's a sticky one to work out, I would think. But I think we have to be objective so that, you know, what is offensive and illegal to some people might be unreasonable control to somebody else. Our float planes, part of Kenmore, make a whale of a racket when they take off. Is that any worse than the noise that, yeah, that, they're controlled by time as well, yeah, so. But my point is, it's, it's, it's got to be really specific. You can't have just a general comment about no noise after 10:00 or whatever.
Anything else? All right, so we're done with code enforcement, right? Okay, next one then.
Moving on to development regulations, when we made this list, one of our options were to eliminate the status of existing legal use for heavy industry uses and to designate heavy industry as general non-conforming uses. So this has been done. This was done with the, the regional business zone code rewrite, and so now currently, industrial uses aren't considered existing legal uses, they're specifically non-conforming uses. There's two separate areas in our code that they have to follow now. The other one was to revise our municipal code to terminate the non-conforming uses by reasonable amortization. This gets, again, a little tricky, and from what I understand, and Rod's probably going to have to weigh on, weigh in on this one too, this hasn't been necessarily done by a city in the state of Washington to amortize out any specific land use or use on a business. It's really more popular when it comes to signs or billboards and, you know, how to, you know, get rid of signs that you, you don't necessarily need.
Councilmember Sperry?
So Brian, I just got a little confused when you said under the first box of revise the Kenmore municipal code to eliminate the statute of existing legal use for heavy industry uses and to designate heavy industry uses as general non-conforming. So when you say that's been done, so does that mean that this statement is now true?
The statement is true.
Okay, so that, you could check that box and it's been completed?
Check that box.
Thank you.
That has been done.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis?
In a general sort of way, I like looking at every option possible, no matter whether it's reasonable or unreasonable, but to me, this amortization seems more in the unreasonable list of possibilities.
I'm happy some of this, but I doubt you go with it. Amortization?
Yeah, the next one is unchecked. Development regs? All done on the council? All right, next item.
Moving on. A few miscellaneous options that we came up with was to, of course, purchase any of the subject properties. Purchase accessory properties. Some properties, excuse me, some businesses have leases on adjacent properties for some of their work. The city to install landscape screening in the right of way. So this would be on 175th to prevent people from being able to see it from 522, which, of course, would probably be pretty tall landscapes.
What kind of trees are you putting there?
Yeah. And another one would be to limit the barge traffic and moorage.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember Sperry.
Well, one thing that I do appreciate how you reached out to the affected businesses to let them know that we were discussing this, and I would hope that that would be part of the process, is seeing if they have any ideas. You know, I think they've heard pretty clear about what some of the complaints are, and maybe there's some ways that they might voluntarily, you know, modify some things that would help. I'm not saying not do this, but I would hope we would also go and ask them what they think they could offer, too.
And, you know, certainly on the noise side, I mean, it's such, so close to some residential areas here that some of the noises, and I know that there's been, on the south part, they're hearing bangs in 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning. So certainly, I mean, I would appreciate what you are going to do, look into the noises. And I saw the one that you are also going to look at possible violations in city wetlands or critical areas ordinances, so on that second page, so. They didn't mention that one?
Yeah, we did.
All I'm saying is that he didn't put a check saying the staff recommend that we do it.
No, I know, but there's a yes behind it, so that's why I was assuming.
Right, that means we can do it under current code. That doesn't mean that they're recommending they actually do it. It's a distinction.
So then, I would certainly want to look at that also.
Okay. So with this, I did reach out to KGM and got an update on their status on the 520 floating bridge project. They're planning on continuing pouring the deckway until September. So September, the deckway pour, concrete pours should be over. They're going to occupy the site until the end of 2016, but from after September on, there's not going to be any noise-related concerns or construction.
And that's fine. I'm just worried about the noise between now and September also, so. Councilmember Herbie.
Did they say at all what they're going to be doing with the property between September? I mean, you're talking 15 months there. What are they going to be doing with it?
It's basically going to be used as a staging site for the bridge construction itself, similarly to the way it was used before they started precasting the anchors and the deck panels. They've used bridge components, so they'll still need to be able to access the navigational channel with equipment and supplies.
Okay, and something I wanted to ask on the last section. You have limit barge traffic and moorage. Can you talk a little bit more about the city's authority to do that?
Well, it's my understanding that the Department of Natural Resources has the authority to limit the barge traffic through there. Also, the Coast Guard monitors the barge traffic and navigation of vessels, but the actual mooring and barge traffic itself is regulated by the Department of Natural Resources. And so anytime a vessel mores or docks in their area, they have to get permission from them.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Not seeing any hands go up or hearing any more comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your work. All right. I see that our city manager has returned from the play. So, next item on agenda, town green, design and budget update. Mr. Carlinsey.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Appreciate you allowing me to go see my son at his elementary school play. It was quite a fun experience, and it was at the North Shore Performing Arts Center. And my dog played the role of sea man, the dog of Meriwether and, Larry, Meriwether, Lewis and Clark. So, and his main line was "Rough, rough, rough," so. So that was fun, thank you. So tonight, we're pleased to have with us Matt Portius of Hewitt Architects and Jim Graham of Graham Bubba Architects and Debbie Bent, our community development director. And they're here to talk to you about the latest on our town green and pavilion building. And it just gets more and more exciting as it gets closer and closer to being a reality. And they have some design updates they want to show you and also some budget updates, cost estimate updates. So with that, I will turn it over to Matt Portius, who will take you through a kind of a virtual visualization of the town green.
Great, thank you, Rob. Good to see you all again. So you'll see on your screen in a moment what we've been up to. We are currently at the 100% design development level, so we have not gone into construction drawings yet, but that's the next step after this meeting. This is a sort of, just a teaser, minute or so, minute and a half long video of what we've been up to on the design side. So I'll let this play, and then we'll, we can stop it, pause it along the way, we can chat about it. And if you have questions, we can answer them. And then I'll turn it over to Jim, and he'll talk a little bit about the building. I'll talk a little bit about the site first, and then I think Rob has some things to mention as well as Debbie. Okay, so, I didn't bring popcorn. I apologize. That would have been good. So this is a good view of, kind of an overview of the project. Where we last left it with you was our leaping off point. We've begun to develop all the details around our previous conversations. So from the site perspective, there's a lot of energy happening here, pretty dynamic paving pattern recalling sort of the waves of the lake and the heron's knees and the stacks of shingles and all that sort of fun referential information we were talking about in the public meetings. There's a, I don't know if you can see my cursor on your screens or not, in this area right through here, there's a specialty pavement band, which actually would be the literal pavers from the 522 Red Brick Road. Mayor, I think you mentioned you might have some that we can access. So that would be a direct reference back to the 522 Red Brick Road. And the other materials here would be granite paver in these red granite bands of pavers that sort of hearken back to that 522 Red Brick Road as well. Granite underneath the water feature area here. This dock element is a pretty direct connection to the water, to the lakefront, and could be some fantastic reclaimed lumber, big, heavy dimensional pieces that are just this sort of honest log, sort of logging reference as well. Three great specimen trees that could be iconic trees, great scale givers and shade givers and seasonal color would be lovely. The paving itself in the sort of main field of paving would be a sandblasted colored concrete. Pretty broad, flexible area, open space area as we head in here. Beginning to see the dock and the water feature. There's a handful of these heated rocks that you probably saw in the movie. Those are heated to 98 degrees or so and just a great spot to lounge and relax. And so there's five or so of those sprinkled throughout, including one in the water feature. And we're working with the codes to see if we can maintain that one of the water feature to be heated or not. It may not be heated, we'll see. Sort of dialing around here. Water feature itself is where we last left it, sort of a circular form with jets, 17 or 18 jets in total, and they sort of migrate up the stairs as well. And so one of the long views, if you're back at the intersection of 68th and 181st, looking towards the west, you'll see the water feature, which will be a little bit of a beacon that will draw you in, in addition to the sort of the long view towards the plantings as a backdrop to that.
Will they go off randomly, or is it just...
They'll be in a sequence, and they will be timed. And we've sort of joked that it could be like the Old Faithful, you know, it could be hourly, and so you could know the time as it happens.
Can some of them be random, or do they need to be programmed?
They will be programmed, but we can program with a pretty infinite number of settings. They can appear to be whatever we want them to be.
I was just thinking, more fun for the kids in the summer time that we're running through them, so.
Yeah, I think there'll be a sequence of them, and so there'll be a bit of surprise. I think kids will be looking and waiting for them to come on, and all of a sudden, they'll be there, yeah.
Yes, we're looking for, I'm looking for the surprise, so.
Yep.
Are questions appropriate?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Before we go too much further, when we look at the plans out on a piece of paper, you know, I have a vision of the space from a standpoint of the whole Kenmore Village and the street side and all that. When I see all these people on it and the cars around it, it looks bigger to me.
Interesting.
Yeah. Are these people and all the vehicles on this video here, are they too scaled?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it looks a lot bigger to me.
It's a...
When you put those items in there, you know, trees can be big or small.
Right, yeah. I think it's...
But people are pretty finite in size.
Yeah, I think it's telling, that it's not a small space. I think it's appropriately scaled, and it's a space that can accommodate, you know, two or 250 people pretty easily. It's a large space, yeah.
I have a question. When you, you said the concrete is a sandblasted colored or tinted concrete. Is that something that will fade either based on use patterns or just through weathering?
Good question. No, it's UV-stable. It's an integral color as opposed to a stain that goes on top. And the sandblasting gives it a little more tooth, a little more texture, and then we'd actually seal it after we sandblast it to keep soda stains and other things off from soaking into the sandblasting. But it is UV-stable. It won't wear and it won't fade with the sun. Yep.
Stacy, you had a question?
Yeah, this is beautiful, thank you. I was curious, at one point, the water was going to flow down the stairs. Is that still going to happen?
It, and let's see if there's a picture that shows a little further in.
It was going to be kind of a little waterfall type action?
There, they'll be up on the stairs, but then the water will flow back into the basin, which would be sort of under this rock. And so they will be cascading down the stairs that way. Yeah, yep. So I'll let, this is a good transition point here to Jim. I think he can talk about the building and Rob.
Sorry, I just have one quick question about that previous slide.
Sure.
You'd mentioned something about the code and whether the rock in the fountain could be heated. What's the issue there?
Well, the rocks are heated with electric cables, and the electric cables have to be a certain proximity to the rock to not have the voltage drop to the element that it's heating. And so typically, the electrical code wants it to be in a non-submerged location, so we'd be looking to place the sort of junction box panel that heats the rock in a distance that's appropriate for the code, which I think is three to five feet, but we're, we'll be looking into that.
Okay, thank you.
And I should note on this water feature that this is a bit of a concave depression, and it would raise and lower, so has the ability to be wet, held at a wet level or drain out completely, so you can just run through it. So there's a lot of flexibility in the water feature itself. And there's also, it's sort of the intersection of these bands, the potential to engrave in six or eight or nine locations the other Kenmores that are around the world, Kenmore, Ontario, or Kenmore...
Scotland.
Scotland, or, you know, wherever it might be, with a north ending and east ending or latitude and longitude miles to Kenmore, Scotland. And it could be fun for kids to do engravings from there. I could see it sort of looped into, or do rubbings from there. I could see it looped into, you know, an art class for rubbings, or maybe a history class or a geography class. It could be quite fun, a little scavenger hunt for the kids. So I think we're going to work with the city on finding those moments of serendipity in the plan, and there's art that would be overlaid with this eventually as well.
Your honor, if I could also jump in. Yeah, so as you mentioned, Matt, opportunity for art that we don't see on this, so that'll be coming eventually. Also, can you talk about that flooding effect that starts from beneath the dock?
Sure, yeah. So in the cycling of the water feature, at whatever programmed time we want to make it, the water would well up from underneath, sort of underneath a stone or within that sort of wet sort of blue area, see on the screen, it would well up, and it would be held at that elevation and draining back out underneath the dock. So it'd sort of well up, so you can sit on the dock with your feet in the water, and then that would slowly drain out at whatever prescribed timeframe we wanted it to drain out. And the jets could either be going through the water or not through the water during that time. So you could have this fairly placid circular pool of water with this great rock in the middle of it. And if you're a kid, and maybe that's your signature spot, you want to be on the rock when everything else is all calm around you and your buddies are looking at you trying to figure out how did they get there. So I think there's a lot of interaction that could be pretty cool with this, with this water feature.
And also for events such as movies on the town green in the summer, we can turn off the water feature and have it be dry, right?
Absolutely. So the water feature can be turned off and drained completely, and there's no noticeable basin there at all. It's all flush, and you can use it, and you can sit on the dock in every place and on the rock and be dry and without being encumbered by the water. So there's a lot of, again, a lot of flexibility with this water feature.
Matt, what is the diameter of that when it's filled up, that water feature, that pond there?
Oh, it's probably 20 feet or so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, probably 18 to 20, something like that. And the height of the jets, we have the ability with the system of the fountain to go upwards of six feet. have the ability with, with the system of the fountain to go upwards of six feet. That feels a little aggressive to me. I think we might, we, we might all walk around and check it out, and we can turn it up pretty high and see. On a windy day, that's going to get a lot of things wet near it. So I think more often, it might be in the three to four foot range. It seems a little more kid, kid-friendly.
How is that possible?
There is a vault and a pump system that's sort of just off to the right-hand side of this image, that would be in the sidewalk, and that's where that's controlled. It's actually a fairly sizable wet vault, or I'm sorry, dry vault that has the sort of wet equipment in it. And it's controlled that way. Sometimes these are controlled in pump rooms in the building, but because of the precious space within the building and the noise that sometimes is associated with those, we didn't want to put it in the, in the building.
So how do we control the quality of the water? Because I know, when we looked at doing something similar in the courtyard here back when we were designing the City Hall, we were, we were told at that time that it had to be potable water and this, that, and the other thing.
Sure, yeah.
So how are we maintaining that water quality?
So this will be potable water. It will have brominator and a, and a UV filter on it as well as cartridge filters. It'll be, need to ma, it'll be maintained or need to be maintained about once a month or so for the filters. There's a lot of sediment, though just from the air that will blow in here. But sediment will be controlled with the filters, and then the quality of the water will be the UV filter and the brominator, which is essentially like a softer, more environmentally friendly chlorine, but it's, it's less harsh.
So if we chose, we'd just turn it off for the winter months, like?
I think the winter months-
April or whatever.
Yeah, I think the winter months, you'd be probably wise to turn it off. We, we've done a lot of these, and we've seen various owners keep them on, and it's the edges that always get a little, where the water's moving, it doesn't freeze, but where the edges and the water's a little more stagnant, it does freeze. And I think there's a slip, trip, and fall exposure there that you wouldn't probably want to expose yourself to.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, the UV filter, I know, will control the algae growth in that water, along with the chlorination or bromination, whatever you do. But the, does the UV filter have any bacteriostatic effect as well?
You know, I'll have to get back to you. Our fountain designers, this is a system that they, they design, that we'd, we'd want to confirm that with them. But we've done this in-
The chemical treatment is what really gets at it. What about with it, do we get a heavy rainstorm? Is there an overflow on this? So if we set it to be off in the winter, and we want it to be dry, and we get a lot of rain, is it going to fill up from below?
Yeah. The overall, if I can see this here.
Because of the hollow, it's down lower, so it'll drain into it.
It's in, they'll drain, yeah, there's a, there's a drain at the bottom of this that will go to storm drain as well. There's also a rim drain here that if, if, that is the overflow of the fountain system itself, and so if this overflow, or if the fountain filled up, it would, it would actually catch this drain element over here. Is it a trench drain that goes to the storm? But there'd also be a storm drain in the bottom. Yep.
Thank you. I do kind of tag teaming with, with Councilor W. Mayor Van Ness's question. So drainage of the water off of this concrete, how's that handled?
There's essentially a High Point Ridge, sort of right through here. And water would drain from this area into an area drain that's located roughly here. And the water, sort of in this L shape, would actually drain into that trench drain. That trench drain goes to the storm system. The area within the water feature goes, circulates back within itself or goes to the sanitary system. Elevationally, this whole plaza is about two feet lower than the adjacent Main Street property development. So you step down into the plaza, if you're coming from the north, you step down to the south. That maintains a, a pretty friendly grade to the road because of the grade change that's out there. We end up matching the road grade a little more crisply that way. And we're able to lift pretty much from what's existing out there today, lift it up by two or three feet throughout the whole site, and still maintain a, sort of ascending, sort of steps up to the elevation of the building, which is raised up from what it is today as well. And where that, where that's really key, maybe jump to the last slide here, and then I'll hand it over to Jim in a minute, is this elevation, or this, this perspective view looking north on, from 181st up 68th, where the street grade is pretty high relative to the buildings. We're trying to lift the building out of the hole and, and not have it be so high that you have this big set of steps going down to the plaza. So as a result, we've lifted the plaza up as well. But not as high as the adjacent Main Street property elevation, because they're, they're lifting their building and their parking lot pretty high. And we didn't want to have an awkward relationship between the road grade and our plaza.
Also, Matt, can you just talk about power, electrical power in the town green and opportunity for audiovisual?
Sure.
Audio.
At this, at this location here, and location up here on, on the porch, there'd be a plug-in spot for AV, for, for a stage, for a PA system, for a speaker's amplifier, for jazz trio and their, and their amplifier, or for a movie, outdoor movie screen. And so this dimension through here is 40 some odd feet, and that's the sort of sweet spot number for an outdoor rented screen. And the renting for those is pretty economical. You're better off renting those as opposed to purchasing one. And then the technology changes all the time. So the screen would go up here for the outdoor movies, and then this area back here would be sort of the amphitheater area for the viewing of the screen. And then in addition to that, there'd be outlets for seasonal, seasonal lighting for the trees, and uplights within sort of these specimen trees. There's new, new streetlights or new pedestrian scale lights that actually have a very similar profile to this kind of prow or this, this eyebrow of the building. And so they're quite, sort of match, well matched to that. And then be lighting up from the, from the paving level up onto wash this canopy as well. So you get this really dramatic effect of the, of the building. There's also lights, the circular sort of array of, of water feature jets are illuminated, so they have lights in them. So at nighttime, you've get, you get the water and the lights together. In the wintertime, you just get the lights themselves, but it's still pretty dramatic. And then the, this, this set of, of rocks here mimics what's happening in the water feature, and again, has lights arrayed around it in a circular pattern.
I thought, I thought the, the building was more offset.
It's-
It looks pretty parallel to the roadway and not turn-oriented.
It's, it's probably a little deceiving in this view, which only the herons would see or the airline pilots. It is very skewed, and I think this is this view. And actually, what we're, what you're reading, there's the, the building face skews back, and the roof form sort of stays parallel. So it's this twist. And so when you're in, walking through it, you definitely will experience that shift.
And I thought that the whole side opened up with the big audacious doors.
The big audacious doors, so you can see them. Yeah, this is the big hanger door, the big audacious door. It's about 24 feet or so in width, and, and maybe that's a good handoff point to Jim, because he can talk in more detail about the building. Although, Brent, did you have a question?
Yeah. The only question was, you mentioned two outlet areas up by the stairs at the north part, and then also for the, actually, which would be right in front of where this shot is.
Yep.
Is there any other outlets on the southern part of the plaza, just for basic electrical hookup?
There's currently not. The, there will be for this tree, there'll be an outlet for the tree as well, so for seasonal color lights. So you could choose to put the twinkle lights in or not, but there'd be an outlet there for them.
Okay. I'm just trying to think that, not knowing what the uses and the programming will be, I would hate to have to run extension cords across the plaza.
The other, that's a great point. And, and so the, these two locations I mentioned in particular are going to be the heavy loaded locations, the higher amperage for the heavier loads. The other locations would be a smaller load. We're also going to run some blank conduit for future art. And if there was an art program that wanted to place art in various locations, there'd be a conduit that could be tapped into to run power to those locations. There'll be conduit for future EV stations. So if the city wants to put in electrical vehicle charging stations down the road, there'd be conduit to come back to the transformer for this project. And the transformer would be sized appropriately for, for, to power those stations. And there's conduit for speakers in this, in the plaza as well, to, to be integrated in with the, the system. And there's Wi-Fi also.
Oh, that's outstanding. Deputy Mayor?
Your lighting comments and your outlets. On each of the tree wells, will there be an outlet to illuminate that tree?
There, some of them will be shared. There's, there's a grouping where there's a, sort of a grouping or a grove of trees. This, these-
Corner, 181st and 68, fellows along.
There's, with these four trees here, the street trees, there might be one shared outlet for two trees. We're not sure yet if we'd want to put one at each tree or one to share between them.
All the others have their own.
The other question I had was, the angled parking has disappeared here.
So there's four, yeah, there's four states, four stalls that have been removed to, to accommodate this buffer area.
I can't see where you're pointing. Can you do that again?
It's, if you can see it through.
Pointer?
Yeah.
Okay. Four stalls removed. What is the, that angular thing at the bottom grave?
That's the curb line, and this is a, this is the existing, or this is a transition to the existing sidewalk in this area. So there'd be motorcycle stalls, two motorcycle stalls here where that would be restriped to, to handle the motorcycle stalls. And there's an existing tree, sort of roughly in that same area, that this isn't depicting. But that's the sort of transitional moment from this further curb face to the, to the parallel, or to the angled parking curb face.
So you've taken four angled slots, angled stalls?
That's correct.
To allow the, the plaza to come closer to the roadway?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The motorcycles reminded me of bicycles. Can you talk about the, the bicycle racks and the bicycle repair station?
Sure. So there's racks close to the door. There's two that are undercover, and four that are out in the side, what would be sort of the traditional sidewalk area. And then in addition to the two that are undercover is a bicycle repair stand as well, which we think would get a lot of use in this location. We have room and ability to put more bike racks in throughout the plaza itself, and ultimately, we might add some more there. Keeping them close to the door is for visibility is, is nice, and having them, a few of them in, under the weather protection is nice as well. The bicycle racks themselves, we haven't, see if I have a view of one here. There are some certainly options for what they'll look like. You can see one in the background here. What's interesting about that particular rack, although it looks fairly straightforward, is the way it's constructed, it actually has a neoprene or a sort of a bumper integrated in with the rack. And so from a usability standpoint, and I happen to be a biker, I agree that this is, you don't scratch your bike when you're like, bike up to it. It has an integrated bumper, and this is the only bike racket, bike on, bike rack on the market that has this integrated bumper to it. So people have these $15,000 bikes, they want to put them in a place that are going to be not scratched.
I know during the summer especially, but quite often on the weekends, there's always a group of six, eight bikers-
Yeah.
-in, in the coffee shops. So I would hope that we would have enough to sort of... But, but again, on the outlets, on, you know, one of the things that we have, we have started doing now for every year, I guess, has been to make sure the street trees are all lit.
Yeah.
Certainly during, during the, the holiday season. So I would love to be able to see that carried through.
Sure.
So rather than have one cord spread between two trees, you might want to consider certainly on the street trees having-
Sure, yeah. But they're in, they're in a landscape bed, and so often we'll see the, the GF CI or the outlet in the middle of the two trees, and they'll run cords because it's in the landscape bed that nobody walks through. That's typically what we'll do. If they're in a tree well, certainly they'd be one at each tree. But where we have the ability to share the infrastructure, it's more economical to do it that way. But we'll, we'll look at that and make sure that it's all accommodated.
Councilman Curtis?
It looked like there was a rock inside the building.
Yeah, and I think that might be the good handoff point to-
Okay. I kind of wrestle with that. On the one hand, I can see, well, it's kids that sit on it, adults that sit on it. On the other hand, it's taking up space.
And I think that from what's being represented here, we're not seeing any of the furnishings of the building. It's hard to really talk about program and flow, and Jim can, Jim can talk about that.
Before you go there, I do have one more outside question. I know you're trying to get inside, but I just have one more. If you go back to the view of the plaza, particularly where the water feature is.
Uh-huh.
I, I had sort of mentally put the line of, of, or not parallel parking, angled parking cars there, because one of the things we've been told early on is how that provides a nice barrier between the street and then the sort of more pedestrian area. So can you tell me a little bit about how you're going to create a, a barrier here? So, because 181st, even though it is our main street, it's a busy street. And I would think that there'd be some, people would feel a little safer if there was a, more of a barrier between, between the street and this area, particularly, I'm assuming, kids are going to be running all over the place, so.
Yeah, yeah. Great, great question and comment. We, safety is critical. And, and all the water features that we've designed, we, we always have that in the forefront of our minds. And it is a magnet for children and, and their parents. And it's, we see this in that light. This will definitely be a magnet. So in terms of a circulation path for the kids, it's very circular. I also see kids going up the stairs and onto the dock. It's a flush transition at the top of the dock. The dock steps down here, so it's never more than 30 inches tall this end, but it steps down to about 18 inches tall this end. And that, that, actually, that dock is six feet wide, and that's the primary, the first sort of line of defense for the kids. That's really the primary indicator that this, you're really going to be hanging out in the water and running around the circuit to the, to the north of the dock, not necessarily to the south of the dock. If you did run around to the south of the dock and run up this sloping sidewalk, and then back up and around this way, it's a long way to go, but I suppose some kids could do it. You know, that dimension from the road to this sidewalk is still eight to 10 feet in that zone, and we'll landscape and buffer plant that pretty heavily.
So are you saying that what we see as green now is eight to 10 feet?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there'll be shrubs and things that'll create separation?
For scale reference, this path, which we can't quite see the entire width of, is eight feet wide.
Okay.
Here. And this dock is six feet wide. So it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty well buffered from, from the road. And we certainly do see the majority of the circulation sort of happening north of the dock.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for taking the time to explain that. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor?
The only other thing I had was the elevation of the green you said was lower than Main Street's parking lot.
Yes.
We can be assured that their water's not going to flood onto our town green.
We-
Dyke in between or something that-
With, yeah, with the absence of a dike, no matter what we do, we're in the low spot. We're, we're downhill of them, no matter what we do. Even if we brought it up two feet, we're still, they're, they're sloping down to us, and so we're-
Only the storm drainage.
We, we still have that issue with the storm drainage. So we're in, we're in the low pace in here. We have seen their grading plans, and we've been coordinating with them to set our elevations. We have seen their grading plans, and we've been coordinating with them to set our elevations jointly along the property line. And they're, they're pitching back and catching their own water. They're not draining into, into our property.
All right. I like it. All right, ready, oh, Councilmember Herbig.
Deputy Mayor's question prompted something in me. I was wondering, is there a stormwater treatment system or a stormwater storage system kind of built into this whole project?
There's, there's not. There's catch basins that handle all the water, and then those waters go to the storm drainage system for the city. We'll be going in and working with city staff on the technical aspects of the stormwater system. As we've seen the geotechnical reports, the infiltration rate is not good here. So the ability to have permeable paving or other things like that doesn't work so well because it's just not draining. It's a very slow infiltration rate. We're not polluting, we're, these are non-polluting surfaces, so it's clean water, and so there's no need to treat the water as a result. So the water would just go right into the storm drainage, drainage system within the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If I can add on to that, what about in the back building, the northeast portion of the property? What, what's there, if you can remind me?
Sure. Let's see if this even shows up in a view here.
Probably have to zoom out. Even behind, kind of, I thought, I thought we were going to do some sort of a.
We, we do have the, the, the model we can look at as well. Zoom out here. So on the north side of the property is, is landscape, and it's, it's wide. It's a, you know, varies in its dimension because of the angle of the building, but it's 15 to 20 feet, maybe even 25 to 30 feet wide, and it's the most wide. And it slopes from high on the east to lower on the west. And so we do have the ability there to do a.
Swale.
Rain garden, swale, sort of fern gully, vine and maple, sort of very interesting northwest tapestry of, of landscape plants, and it'll be quite beautiful. We can think about taking rainwater from the building to charge that system through downspouts or scuppers, and if the art ends up going that way, we could do that. But it's, it's sort of this fissure between the two projects would be this sort of robust green tapestry, and that could feel like a rain garden. The, the issue or the problem with rain gardens on this site is, again, the soil doesn't infiltrate, so a true rain garden that allows water to filter down to the, to the groundwater doesn't particularly work.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, ready to move inside?
Thank you. As you can see, as we move inside, these views are really good to expose the notion that this building is all about shelter. It wants to be the living room for the city off the town green, and so Matt, if you can go to the next one. A large roof gesture that faces both to the south and to the west, so it addresses the green, but it also addresses 181st to gather the town and be an outward sign that it's a place of shelter. There's a large, deep porch or overhang that provides protection and shelter, but also allows that roof to continue into the building. The northeast corner, you can maybe keep flowing through, is a lower portion, that's the service. The rest is open. It's about the views into the building, and then when you're in, the view's out. The indoor/outdoor connection, of course, being the large door, and seasonally the operation of that to connect the town green right into the space. On the interior, you might notice the fireplace element, again, a gesture towards gathering, particularly in the, the winter months, and all the glass being a beacon of that fire. At night, it is meant to be a beacon, so the, the light or the, the windows are placed at the corners. There's some shading elements that will work also in the, the summer months when we're trying to mitigate the light, but it will create patterns at night. In that service block, we have one small meeting room. It's meant to be more of a flexible space, so it could be for small meetings, it can be for service to the larger gathering space for sort of party, command central, or maybe it's a smaller game area when there's a lot of activity going on with various ages of children. You did make comment about the rock. That's really meant to echo what's going on in the exterior. Again, a chance for kids to sit on it, but also a play structure, climb on it. The hearth extends towards the town green from the fireplace as a place to sit and really start to zone the two areas, the larger open area that's flex, that could be everything from a small performance to a larger banquet, and then the opposite side being small, more intimate, that's meant for lounge-like seating, where you can be inside and still see out to the town green. The eastern side is where the, the potential in future retail will take place. None of the interior is populated with both the furniture or the tenant improvements. But here you can see, as we have a lower support volume on the northeast corner, it allows for a clear story of window to balance the light as it comes in from the other side. The large connectivity of the big door as it opens to the town green.
Is the rock heated?
On the interior, no, it's not heated. The fireplace is.
Radiant floor system?
Oh, yes. There, there is a radiant floor system, that's how we're heating the space interior. So when you have young children and they are playing on the floor, people sitting on the floor, it will be pleasant and inviting as opposed to a cold concrete floor because it, it is a hard surface throughout the interior.
Gas-fired fireplace?
Yes, that's true. So very simple material palette, meant to be natural warmer materials, there's some wood. There is a steel superstructure. There'll be plywood ceiling. We'll be pumping a lot of light to that so that it's warmly, warmly reflected down. And again, that, that gesture towards shelter and the roof that's seen from the south and also from the west. Questions on the interior?
Councilmember Sperry.
Can you remind me what the square footage, the total square footage of the building is? I know we've reduced it some.
We're just under 5,000. Forty-eight.
I think it's.
Forty-six hundred is where we're down to now.
Forty-six hundred.
Yeah.
And what would you estimate, estimate the retail portion would take?
We're, I think, 12 to 1500 maximum.
So basically, it's like a good-sized house in the 3,000 square foot range for the sort of living room area?
The residual, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But one, I think that the, the sense of the space will be different than a house because it's so voluminous, and the, the gesture of the roof as it goes to the exterior, and the intent is that it'll, it'll seem, it'll feel seamless, and so that there's more of a roof presence. So while it's only about 3,000 interior, it'll feel much bigger.
And height-wise, how high do the ceilings go?
They pitch from a low point at the, called the northeast service box, of about 14 feet, 13 and a half, upwards of 18 to 20. So, yeah, it's, it's in the scale of this at this exterior envelope.
Well, I do think that you captured the indoor/outdoor feel that we were hoping for, you know, really having that connection, whether it's through the, the big door or, you know, through windows. So I think that's something that people are going to really appreciate.
I think it'll be a really inviting beacon at night. You'll be able to see the activity going on. It's meant to be transparent in that manner so that if, if people see that things are going on, they're attracted to come in and join.
We see a little bit of that in the library.
Yes. I, I do think that it, it will be complimentary in the trio of civic buildings right here that, that we, we feel a lot of pressure being in, in between these two great structures. And so I, I hope it answers to that.
No, I think.
But it does have that.
Kind of that modern look with, you know, the windows, so, thank you. The library doesn't have rocks inside, though.
Jim, can you also talk about the lockers and?
Yes.
AV and the presentation wall, which is on the same wall as the lockers?
Yeah. So, and we've, we spoke earlier about the lockers. These are not meant for public use, they're meant for the organizations that may find their home in here. It allows them to be, I think, more easily use the space if they can store some of their goods for a weekly or monthly. And along that back wall, we'll have a drop-down screen that we will present against for projected images.
And so we'll also have the interior wired for audiovisual as well.
Yeah, the same sort of sound system that Matt spoke of on the exterior. It'll be fully ready for PA and.
And a flat-screen TV eventually.
Yeah, the idea that the flat-screen would take place in that smaller room, the meeting room.
Yep.
So there will be a projector?
The projector, yes. And that will be back towards the fireplace there, and it will project towards the north on a drop-down screen that will occur in front of the lockers.
That will be there from the beginning, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the intent.
Other questions?
So if we can also talk schedule and budget. So assuming we get approval to keep moving forward tonight, what's, what does the schedule look like?
Sure. So we would kick off our CD effort, and we'd have, I think we already have scheduled a pre-app intake meeting with the city in a couple weeks, which is largely a review of our 100% DD documents, which are actually a pretty, pretty sizable set. We've made a lot of progress in drawings and specs. And so we'd be in about two months or so through permit level documents, submit for permit, wait for those permit comments to come back, then submit for bid, and then pick contractor and be ready to dig in September. That's the general timeframe.
Yep.
And the key, I think, there in terms of budget and cost is the wet weather, you know, happens October 1st. Allowing a contractor to get some utility work done before the wet weather comes will make it more cost-effective for him. So we're trying not to push it too far. If we hit October, it's not the end of the world, it's just going to increase costs a little bit.
So assuming we get started in September, when do you think the project will be ready for occupancy?
The, the shell, which here would be the shell plus the finishes of the assembly area, would be ready in, you know, late, late winter, early spring of next year. It's probably an eight-month construction schedule. And then it'd be the fit-out for the TI space after that, and it would be, you know, ready for early summer, I would assume, with the, with the fit-out of the TI space.
And so the whole project could be done, say, by the end of June?
Yes. Yeah, 2016. Yeah.
So you're looking from us tonight, direction to move forward permitting and the construction?
Right. And the council bill that you have talks about the need for additional budget. We went through some value engineering to try to save as much money as possible and cut costs where we could. But at the same time, we were doing that, other costs went up. So the, the delta on the project is still about $700,000. In the council bill, I've identified a couple of funding sources on how to get to the full $4.2 million project cost. This project is what we call total cost to complete. That's a term that Chris Overly has taught me. But it's start to finish, meaning the conceptual work that was done in 2014 all the way through to final occupancy in 2016.
Councilmember Herbig.
I just want to start off by saying I love the project. It looks, this looks spectacular. But I do need to ask, this is a question for Rob, you know, since the last time we had a budget in front of us, this has gone up 20%. What, what were the changes that kind of, that drove that increase? Because that, that's concerning to me. We're talking about a $4.2 million plaza now, instead of three and a half, and, you know, it troubles me just a little bit. So could you walk me through that a little bit more?
Yeah, and Matt, do you want to take a stab at that and talk about what costs have went up and what, what, what's gone down and why we're still where we're at?
Sure. I'll try. So we were shooting for the three and a half. We had three and a half million as the initial number. We've had two rounds of budget exercises with a third-party cost estimating company. The first effort was 50% DDs, so it was a few months ago, and that might have been the last time we all talked. The numbers were high then. They were not three and a half million. We were hoping through VE that we could come down on the numbers. We went through that process, and through the course of discovery, the geotechnical report, for one, indicated that this building couldn't be built on a traditional slab footing. They needed, this building needs piles under it, and so it'll be built with pin piles underneath the point loads of the structure. That increased the, the budget, or the cost estimate, rather. There's fire sprinkling, fire suppression that is needed for the building. We're actually reviewing that i- if it is needed for the building with the city, but chances are it is based on the size and its use.
And we're actually recommending that we do it no matter what, given the fact that we require residential to do it, so I think we need to set that example, so.
Right. The, there's been sort of a few subconsultants that we've added to make sure that we're hitting all the cities once. In terms of the AV systems, we have an acoustical engineer on board now, which will help dial in the specifics on how the building functions. And we have, I mean, we were initially going the route of a design-build mechanical electrical plumbing engineer, which traditionally has been a cost-effective way to mitigate some upfront costs. But as the market has trended and everybody is so busy, the, the word that we're hearing from our industry is that the design-build MEP route is not the way to go, that you'll spend more money doing that. So we've included their subconsultant fees, and they've included a lot of design information in the building that would have eventually caught up with us. We would have paid for it in the end through the contractor. But it's a much more secure way to go because you know what you're getting into before you get into your contingency. We do have a 10% contingency before, we were carrying a 7 and 1/2% contingency, so with the city's recommendations, we've increased that contingency up to 10%. Those are some of the highlights that's gotten the increased number. There's also the owner's FFNE furnishings, that would be the AV system, the site furnishings, and the interior furnishings, and that number that budget want has gone up to make sure we have quality that matches the quality of the architecture here.
Also, also site development.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, so, so the site development costs, this, as we sort of integrate in with the project to the north, raising the, the road or the site up those couple feet is, is needed for a lot of reasons, but that's a lot of fill dirt that needs to, needs to happen to do that.
And so this estimate assumes for now that we're not getting that fill dirt for free because we don't have an agreement yet with the neighbor.
Right.
Great.
Right. And the, the other part of this project that we haven't talked about and doesn't show up in our views here is the intersection of 67th and 181st, and that's also included in that.
Included in the budget.
In that budget number we've been talking about.
Deputy Mayor.
You mentioned something about the building being more expensive because you couldn't just build it on a standard foundation or slab, and you had to put it on pilings. I don't really understand all the geotechnical stuff, but if you got to put it on pilings, it would mean to me that it's pretty soggy stuff underneath there, not firm, solid bedrock to build it on. Well, that to me means that that's kind of soil that stuff will soak through. So why can't you do permeable pavement, and why do you have the drainage issues? You, you made a statement on the green that you couldn't, that it didn't drain well.
Good, good question.
Which, you know, if it, if, if the building can't sit on it, then why can't stuff flow through it?
So the, the quality of the soils is more about what's called liquefiable soils during an earthquake, and that layer is not at the top, but it's below the surface. So the stratification of layers is that the top many feet is pretty impermeable, doesn't drain well. That's for lots of feet. And then there's a, a segment of the soil lens, those horizons, that is liquefiable. It will, during an earthquake event, it will turn to jello and just sort of shake the foundation, anything sits on it. It's very much like what Soto is in, in Seattle. It's all very liquefiable soils there.
Yeah, this whole area was pretty swampy at one time when the lake was 16 feet higher.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So that, so it is true, the top layer does not drain to get down to that layer, but it's almost like a perched water table. It's below the surface. So that the pin, what we're, the piling system that we're suggesting here, that's been suggested by the Geotech and. by the geotech and by the structural engineer, is a pin piling system, they're actually a series of three-to-four inch sort of piles that are 60 to 70 feet long each, and they're driven into the ground as sort of spikes, and that's, there's about 80 of them, and that supports, yeah, they're at an angle, and that supports the load of the building. The slab of the building is not supported, so if there was an event, an earthquake event, the slab of the building would circum the sort of differential settlement, it would crack up, but the building and the structure would be sound itself. So because it's not a response facility, and it's not an area of refuge for the community, that's seen to be okay. If there's guidance that this would want to be a different sort of structure, you know, that would just increase the cost even further if we needed to support the entirety of the slab.
All right, anything else for us?
That's all of our presentation.
Need to take any action?
We do. We need to authorize the.
I think you can usually get some free couches along the side of the road, maybe we can cut some costs there.
We need to move forward with permitting and construction of the town green, building as designed. So is there a motion to move forward?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Councilmember Sperry.
Is there anything we can do to get it done faster?
One, one, there's one concept that we might go to bid before we have permit comments back.
Interesting.
And we're doing that currently on the skate court, the skate court is scheduled to go to bid here in a couple weeks.
Okay.
The permit comments aren't back yet, but we've been working closely with the city staff to anticipate what they might be, get ahead of them, and in our pre-app meeting with the city, we'll review that approach, and this is a much more complex project, obviously. So within, within those discussions, I think we'd look to see if that's possible, to save time off the schedule. That could possibly put us going to bid in as early as beginning of August, you know, giving the contractor a little more flexibility before we hit the wet window, the wet weather window.
The better.
I think our.
City manager.
Just, you know, I really appreciate the city council's, I guess, vision for this project. You know, you see the text in the council bill giving some background about why we're doing this. It is going to provide that central gathering space in the bull's eye of our downtown, and this is a decision that you're making that will last and be here for many, many years. Multiple generations will appreciate this town green, long after we're all gone, so big decision here for Kenmore, and I think it's quite significant, and there is a lot of community excitement about it right now. I'm hearing nothing but positive, lots of unsolicited cheering from the community, so just wanted to add that.
Councilmember Curtis.
Can we get this cool movie on any kind of website that people can see it, or does it require a special program to make it work?
No, it does not, you can have it, yep, it's available.
Can we attach that to something, so people?
Yes, in fact, thank you for that, we're actually, in the near future, we're going to be doing more to let the community know about what's going on, including some visuals on-site, some exterior visuals, so people can picture what's going on, and Main Streets is working on developing a website for our downtown, and we'll partner with them on that, so.
All right, anything else? We've got a motion forward, a motion in front of us now to move forward with permitting and construction of the town green and community building as designed. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward.
Yes.
Very excited by the project.
Fantastic.
It's going to be great.
All right, next item on the agenda is staff reports, Ms. Bent, nope, we've got, you're coming back, you can't disappear yet, but we have Mr. Carlinsey on Wyra 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wyra 8 has elected official representation, and in the past, Mayor Baker and Deputy Mayor Van Ness have represented the city on this committee. As of late, they haven't been able to attend, but given how important watershed issues are to the city of Kenmore, and given the fact that we're a downstream city, I think it's important for us to fly our flag at this committee, and this is for elected officials, I'd send staff to it if I could, but we really do need elected official representation. And I understand that the meeting date and time, and Mayor Baker, if you could remind us of when that is, I think it's a certain Thursday of each month in the afternoon.
Let me just verify, what is, this Thursday is the third Thursday or the second Thursday?
Second.
Third. Yeah, the third Thursday in the afternoon, I believe it's at 3:00, and I would love to be able to attend, but I have a Board of Health meeting at that same time. Councilmember Sperry.
I used to attend it, and is it still down in, like, Mercer Island or something?
Yeah, Bellevue, City Hall.
Bellevue City Hall, okay.
The one that's coming up this week, this Thursday, is at Department of Ecology, 160th, someplace southeast Bellevue somewhere.
Yeah, southeast Bellevue.
Been there a couple hours?
I have attended a couple of them with Eric Edman, but I have the conflict with every three months, the same time as when is the Economic Development Council Board meeting is, and it also seems to fall at the times when we're going to NLC meetings as well, quite often.
So, I mean, I would love to be able to attend, it's just I can't get from one to the other and still have enough time at the other two.
Not only that, it conflicts with my time with our city manager, but that could be changed.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, that can be changed.
I'd like to be able to attend more, but if there's somebody that's able to do it every month, that would be good.
Yeah, that's the issue, is we can't get anybody there every month.
And the other problem is that that time, it's from 3:00 to 5:00, and you're fighting rush hour traffic and all that, too, so.
Yeah, it's a huge commitment.
Which, you know, that doesn't bother me, with the health meeting, it's not over till 4:00, so, you get out at 3:30 sometimes, but still, it's going to be 4:00 before I got there.
And then you've got to get across the bridge and.
Yeah.
So I think some attendance is better than no attendance, so Deputy Mayor, what about two out of three?
Yeah, I'd like to commit to it.
Maybe I could continue, then maybe I could hit part of the third, but, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that possible?
I'd like to continue, unless there's somebody that can justify taking the time to do it, but it would.
Just a question, do they have go-to meeting or web or anything that people could log in?
No.
Well, could they get that? Save you the traffic.
Oh, yeah, I don't understand, but there's a number of cities that are already going in organizations, so I mean, certainly we can ask. I don't know if they have the facilities in the meeting rooms to do that, that's where the issue comes in.
The other interesting thing to me is everybody pronounces it Wyra, and it's spelled Ria.
Yeah.
W-R-I-A.
But everybody pronounces it Wyra.
Yeah.
Well, you're right, it is Ria.
So I think I have an answer, if Deputy Mayor, if you could go at least two out of three times each quarter, that would be great.
I'll go this week.
And then we'll try to tag-team the third time with somebody else. Okay, appreciate that, thank you. And then lastly, did you talk about this item yet, this comprehensive?
Plan update?
No.
Okay, I didn't know how much you had moved things around.
We finished everything except for your staff.
Okay.
It's the plan update is where we're at.
Yeah, is Debbie coming? So there is a memo attached to that staff report, and it has to do with, mainly about light rail, so if you remember the transportation element that you just adopted just late last year, actually, we don't make a strong mention of light rail in that element. Yet, at the same time, I've been advocating for light rail designation through Kenmore, and I believe Mayor Baker has, both Mayor Baker and I have attended Sound Transit, advocating for light rail in Kenmore. And so I have two questions for you. Number one, is it council direction for us to keep advocating for light rail in Kenmore? And again, this is a long-term thing, we probably won't, I'm almost certain I won't see it in my career, maybe not even lifetime, but is it something that we, with a long view, look for and ask for and advocate for? So first question, do we advocate for light rail in Kenmore? And second, if you do, should we strengthen our transportation element with language accordingly? And if you agree with that, then you'd send it to the planning commission for them to have a recommendation for you, and for you to review it on June 1st. And then there's a similar discussion about ferry, I'm less concerned about passenger ferry because the comp plan does talk about it more so than it talks about light rail. So first question is really pertaining to light rail, number one, should we advocate for it long-term? And number two, do you want to amend the transportation element accordingly?
And I sort of think that Sound Transit 3 is in front of the legislature now, looking for authority to get funding from somewhere for it. I don't see anything for Kenmore being into lease Sound Transit 4, and then it's probably going to be discussion, or I sure don't see it being planned as being built in that timeframe, so we're still out there a long ways.
Turn of the century?
Maybe.
The next.
Maybe. Councilmember Sperry, let's just go down a line, Councilmember Sperry.
I was, I was looking, actually, thank you for this excellent memo here, and in the part on page two where you said background, and then you've listed all the current comprehensive plan policies that are focused on that, and there is a mention at the very last, oh dear, I lost it, lost it, lost it, it's on page two, it's at the bottom, very bottom of page two, and policy, transportation element policy T dash 2.2 dash, or .1, and then it talks about partnership with state, regional, local agencies, address regional transportation issues, these include regional air, rail, and water transportation facilities and services. Would that cover it?
So I'm saying that if you are requesting light rail to go through Kenmore, this isn't specific enough.
Okay, so you would want light rail, or something like that?
Yeah, and this talks about regional rail, it doesn't say exactly where it would go.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I wrote an email to at least some of you, and I am not in favor of light rail, and here's the reasons. It's one more thing to divide north and south Kenmore, it would take valuable real estate along the lake, it's not as flexible for riders as bus service, and it requires a lot of parking in proximity to the rail line. So I, I don't think it's the right way to go.
Councilmember Herbig?
I think it's the only way to go, because I think in the long term, we're never going to be able to build ourselves out of congestion with our cars, and we have to give folks a different way to get where they need to go, and transit, frankly, great separated transit, or at least transit that controls its own right-of-way, like light rail, is the only way we're ever going to make getting downtown any faster, because it's just going to get worse. People are going to continue moving here, we're a quality place to live, and then they have to get downtown one way or the other, and buses are going to get stuck in traffic, light rail will get us out of that at some point. So I think, I think it's worth putting some strong language in there, even if we think it's going to be Sound Transit 4, Sound Transit 5, you know, we need to have that on our list and be fighting for it now, rather than waiting till when we think our turn may come up, because it may come up sooner than we think, you never know. I mean, Sound Transit 3 is not set in stone yet either, high-capacity transit is on their possible list of things they could put through here. How realistic it is, who knows, but it is on the list of possibilities, I don't think we should go up just because we think it's too far out.
I think if we were going to have a development, Lake Point developing at any time in the future, that certainly would be a great place to have some sort of, some sort of stop, and I think we've always planned on a transit center there on part of the Lake Point property, at least I can remember having that discussion back in 2004, talking about bus and park and ride, so I certainly would agree with that. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm in favor of putting in here, if you don't, if you don't ask for it, you obviously aren't going to get it, but if it's requested in this, and we're, it just makes sense that when the, when the whole light rail system gets built out, it's got to go, got to be convenient for everybody in the area to get from where they are to where they want to go. And I have the vision of a light rail that goes around the lake, connecting all the universities, and we've got the trail, we've got a 50-foot right-of-way, that the light rail could be up on pedestals, and the only time it would block anybody's view from 522 would be when a train's going by. But I think it's worthwhile pursuing, it's obviously not going to happen in my lifetime, but I think we should be thinking about it for the future. If it's not in our plan, we'll be more optimistic than that. Well, if you've had the medical problems I've had, you don't know how long it's going to last.
It's a passive failing in the medical community. Councilmember Danuski?
I'm not necessarily against it, but I do have concerns with noise and with views. If we have a big elevated thing going right by the views we're trying to protect on the lake, also, if we say we want light rail, I'd want to make sure that we get a stop, and it's not just to watch the trains go by as they go to Bothell. So if we do put the light rail in, I'd want to make sure that we put a stop in Kenmore in there.
Councilmember Smith, I haven't forgotten you down there.
I'm definitely in favor of adding it, I just feel like it's one of those things that it would be nice to know that if, if there are opportunities 10, 15 years from now, 20, 30 years from now, that we can look back and say, yeah, this is something we've had in our plan, we've wanted, we've looked forward to this since the year 2015.
There you go.
When I'm still alive.
Yeah, maybe 30 years from now or whenever, when they have the ribbon cutting, the then city clerk will go through the minutes, he or she will do a search, and she will come across this particular meeting.
They can put it underneath 522 like the metro system in Washington DC.
Make sure that is in the, is in the minute.
My grandson was pushing.
Do you want to ride the train?
Pushing for this way back in 15.
Of course, now that, now that we're recorded, that will live on in posterity right now. All right, anything else?
So I do need your direction on light rail, and then if you want to give me additional direction on ferry as you can, but I want some sort of direction on light rail first.
We can do this with consensus thumbs, yeah, light rail, I'm going to, let's look for some thumbs here, I see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all seven.
Okay.
Milton changes his mind.
Even Milton. He certainly can. Always reserve the right to learn something and grow.
So we basically picked option two, correct?
Pardon?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, got it.
And so then ferry, we've got stuff in there, what do we need on that, that we want to remain a demonstration route?
So, for example, right now in our shoreline sub-element, we have passenger-only ferry facilities should be encouraged. That's strong enough for me, but if we want to make it even stronger, you can, we can direct the planning commission to strengthen it.
Well, I certainly would be in favor of that, I mean, we've been on the demonstration route, and we're one of the few cities on the lake that really is pursuing this, so I think I would certainly like to see us to continue to pursue it if something like that were to happen.
And in particular, Debbie Bent is recommending that we have it in our transportation element, I guess that's the clarification.
So, I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, we're looking to become a multimodal, I mean, the way we're situated, you know, we've got the seaplane, we've got the bus routes, we've got the bicycle routes, we've got, hopefully down the road.
Submarines will be next, submarines will be next.
Submarines could be next.
And, you know, I went to the Heritage Society's presentation a week ago, Wednesday or whenever it was, and they talked, they had a presentation on the mosquito fleet, and the five, Virginia Five in particular, and nationwide, there were a couple thousand of those. of those steamboats in, in the nation at the time, at the height, and they're like the 1920s or 30s, and there's only two left, the Virginia Five and one other somewhere else, I don't know where it is. But those at one time, during that time, those were private sector, financially profitable enterprises with no public subsidies going to them. Back then, there weren't any roads to speak of, so you did need the ferries to get around, but I found that fascinating. But I am skeptical about whether a passenger ferry service could be, could pencil and wouldn't need to be heavily subsidized, and, so you know, that's all, the jury's still out on that, and that's hopefully what the study's gonna look at, but anyway, so, just my thoughts.
So we're in favor of including this one in the transportation element?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So wait, Rob, you're saying that you're comfortable with the current language as it is?
Well, I am because it's mentioned in our comp plan and in our policies, but to make it even stronger, you can have some good language in the transportation element in particular.
Yeah.
And you can direct the planning commission to do so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I see two thumbs already, two, three, four, five, six, eh, almost seven.
Six and a half.
Yeah, six and a half.
Yeah, the, the main point here is I, I gotta make sure that I'm not out over my ski tips, and so I, in other words, I'm not out in front of you, and I gotta make sure I have clear direction from you before I'm advocating for things, so.
I'd like to make a point that just because it isn't gonna pencil out, doesn't mean we shouldn't produce it, pursue it, because it, there aren't any transportation systems that we have that are self-sufficient. I mean, the bus system is subsidized to about 75 percent, so in the, in the light rail and all of it, there's no way that it can be penciled out on its own and to be run by. The only, the only things in this country, really, that are privately owned are the toll roads on the east coast where they have that traffic, and nothing around here, it's all subsidized.
All right. Anything else, that's it?
That's it, thank you.
All right, reports, comments?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank our city manager for not only giving the state of the city report or talk, I guess, at the, to the Bothell Chamber, but to recording it, so I got to see it, and I, I had been told that there was a standing ovation at the end, but what I didn't know was people were cheering before he even started. So that shows the level of enthusiasm for our city, so, good job, thank you, and thank you for recording that, I think that's important.
I planted people in the audience, namely employees who I promised bonuses to later on.
Works, yeah. Well, the enthusiasm was palpable, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Just to report on the Washington DC trip, I think it was worthwhile to go back and talk to the Army Corps of Engineers and our, so Del Benny's office and our senators' offices, and even though they all left town because it snowed, they had left staff behind, and ultimately, they're the important folks anyway. They, they run the, the agendas and keep these important topics in front of our voting members, so I think it was worthwhile.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing for me.
Deputy Mayor?
I'd just like to add a little bit to Milton's comments about the meeting and meeting with our legislators, the NLC meeting was, was an excellent meeting as usual, and in this one in, in DC, usually the speakers for most of the meeting are those individuals from the cabinet or the executive branch. And this year, we were honored with President Obama speaking to the group, first time in about 20 years that a president has spoken to the National League of Cities. I expected a little more partisan comments from him, I didn't get that at all. He was speaking about a new initiative that's called the.
Tech Hire.
Tech Hire Initiative, where there's, I forwarded it to you, Rob, just today or yesterday.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
His talk, you can listen to it online at nlc.org, but also comments, written comments from the Secretary of Labor and to other people as to how this whole thing is gonna be implemented and the dollars that are available from where and for what, and, and I, I would like to explore a little more whether, whether the city of Kenmore could become part of this and, and to capitalize on this along with our incubator approach to, to business development. All in all, I thought it was a great meeting, it's an opportunity to get together with people from all over the country, and you find out they all have the similar, similar problems that little Kenmore does. I chatted with two people from St. Petersburg, Florida, that's where Peter Kagayama lives and is from, and they both knew him and thought very highly of him, so I'm looking forward to his, his day with us next month, should be really interesting. I've read his book and find that, or his latest book, and find that he's got some really interesting comments, it'll be a valuable time for us, I think. That's about it for me, you can fill in a little more about the meeting if you like.
There were some, there were some very good programs, I think, I had the opportunity to stop in to talk with the folks at the, at the priority-based budgeting, and they were a little surprised that, that we came out the way we did, and the fact that we were pretty much following our budgeting according to what our priorities were in, in the city, and so I think there's some more information they were gonna come back with at, at some point. There was, there were some really, really good, good classes, and I had the, the privilege of being part of the ribbon cutting at Kenmore Air.
Ah, yeah.
With Todd's mother, Leslie, she and I cut the ribbon. I certainly had the opportunity to, to say how much Kenmore Air meant to the community and, and how we valued having them as, as a business in, in our city. And that, that hangar is so impressive, it, it really is, and, and what they did and what they're gonna be able to do in there, I think is, is really gonna be good. One of their mechanics won a state or national award, a national award.
A national award for the northwest area.
Northwest area for one of the mechanics, so.
FAA.
From the FAA, which I thought was, was really, really very good. Warstot meeting on, at Kirkland City Hall on Wednesday night, they're gonna be finalizing what the toll is gonna be on 405, so I certainly plan on attending that, and the city manager, I think, is gonna be there also. I'm going to, to try and make sure that there's some money for mitigation from the diversion, and we've got a couple of ideas, and I should really let you talk about that one idea, the, I'm only thinking Houndover, but that's not it, it's, it's, what is it?
Oh, I just saw that today, Hoven Ring.
Hoven Ring, the Hoven Ring, pretty neat traffic calming device, but, or pedestrian, bicycle way to get across busy streets, I thought was pretty good. You'll have to ask Rob about the Hoven Ring.
So if I could jump in, Mayor, so Wednesday night, when we go and talk to the Washington State Transportation Commission, you know, we're gonna say, hey, if you, if you implement tolls on 405 hot lanes, you need to build in revenue for mitigation for cities like Kenmore, and when we may get asked, well, okay, what would you use the mitigation money for? And there's a variety of answers. One is to help us with our bridge, the additional wear and tear on our local roads, helping us fish, finish 522. Those are all good answers, but I'm also, another answer is it could go towards a grade separated crossing or crossings, whether it's vehicle, peds, or both. So that is an answer that I'm probably gonna give.
Couldn't, couldn't you also say safety improvements?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
You what? Safety improvements.
Safety improvements.
Yeah.
So on the 24th, I'm gonna go to an open government, a, a, a training session on open government and transparency that the, the state is putting on, and I mentioned earlier Saturday, I was at the Willamore Flood Plane Project in, in Redmond, where I had some really great conversations with Councilmember Jane Hague and Councilmember Kathy Lambert about, about the effects in Kenmore. I was telling them about how we're downstream of everything, and we really get dumped on. So one of the things that we had looked at that's in the budget for, for this next two-year period is some telemetry to take a look at some conditions in the river at Swamp Creek and at the mouth of, of the San Amish River and the lake, and their biggest thing, as I said, there, there was loss of fish, they don't know where it's coming from, and so I was talking to them about maybe some possible ways that we could partner and get even more background information that, that we could utilize, because the way it is now, we have none. Tomorrow, I am going to get briefed on best starts for kids. It's a new program that's gonna be started here in the county, that's going to try to make sure that the kids in the area are going to get the best starts possible, so it's got to do with healthy eating, it's got to do with early childhood education, it's got to do with a number of things, so with our involvement in Let's Move and Playful City and everything else, it just seems like a natural to, and they're gonna brief a few mayors and councilmembers about it, so I thought that, fine, might as well do it. Chris Overlees, our, our illustrious engineer, did, did a, a presentation at ETP, the East Side Transportation Partnership, last Friday, and from all of the reports I'm, I'm getting, she did an outstanding job, and we certainly appreciate what you were able to do and, and the way you did it, so thank you, I'm sorry that I had another meeting and couldn't be there, but I'm hearing rumors, so. Anyway, that's all I have, and I guess unless there is something else urgent, we're adjourned.
Go ahead, you're gonna cancel it, aren't you?